Why don't we call the meeting to order? We'll do a salute to the flag. I don't have the prayer sheet, I'm sorry. So do a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Nation unto God.
Invisible.
Liberty. Justice.
Counselor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott. Counselor Mayor Lady.
Here.
Counselor Mercy.
Here.
Counselor New.
Here.
Counselor Rock.
Here.
Okay, um, memorials, Counselor Mercy, then Counselor Samaras, Counselor Mercy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Alexandra Lambracopoulos Panagiotopoulos. She was the beloved wife of Stavros Panagiotopoulos with whom she shared sixty-two years of marriage. She was born in Diavvolisie Messinia, Greece. Alexandra graduated college in Tripoli Teaching Academy, uh, Teaching Academy in Greece with a degree in education. She taught in Calamata for five years before immigrating to the United States with her husband and daughter to teach at the Hellenic American School and the largest full-day grade school in all of America. For twenty-five years Alexandra taught Greek language, history, theater, music, and dance, helping keep the culture alive and thriving for the sizable Greek immigrant community of Greater Lowell. She also enjoyed the privilege of teaching her own children, nieces, nephews, and even one of her grandsons. In addition to teaching at the Hellenic American School, she also taught afternoon Greek classes at the Transfiguration Greek Orthodox Church. Alexandra also suited dozens of students and adults at her home even after her retirement in nineteen eighty-eight. When not teaching Alexandra worked tirelessly for her family business at the Athenian Kana Restaurant in Lowell. I, I wish I had a bell, I, I would ring it now. The restaurant which opened its doors in nineteen seventy-four still uses many of the recipes Alexandra brought with her from Greece. Alexandra frequently attended Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church and was eternally grateful for the blessings the church provided her family, not the least of which was the opportunity to come to the United States and enjoy the American dream. In addition to her loving husband Stavros, Alexandra leaves behind her daughter Theodora Parahaleos and her husband Paris, and her son Theodore Panagiotopoulos and his wife Riley. Also four grandchildren who she adored, Dan, Alyssa, Ari Stavros, and Ruby Alexandra. I'd like to offer my and our thanks for promoting her Greek heritage. We offer our condolences to her family relatives and many friends. And if I could offer one more, I would like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Adam A. Juknavarian, beloved father, grandfather, and pillar of the Armenian community. Adam was born in Lowell and was raised in the Highlands section of the city. He graduated in local schools graduating from Lowell High School. He then attained a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering from Lowell Technological Institute. Mister Jack Navarian served with the United States Army in the Fourth Armored Division during the Vietnam War from nineteen sixty-two until his honorable discharge in nineteen sixty-four. He was a communicant of Saint Vitinaz Armenian Church and served on the parish council for many years as well as being a very active member of the church. He was a fifty-year distinguished member of the Armenian Revolutionary Federation. He was also very active in the Armenian National Committee where he was awarded the Vahan Kardashian Award for his longstanding activism and dedication to the Armenian causes. He was also a member of the Armenian American Veterans and Armenian Genocide Society. His Armenian heritage was a great source of pride for him. And on a personal note, I was very proud to see firsthand the dedication and pride he had for his heritage in Armenian culture. Adam along with his brothers Armin and Ara organized the committee to have the beautiful Armenian monument permanently set in front of City Hall just downstairs. He is survived by his son Adam and his wife Carrie, his beloved grandchildren Madison Emily and William Henry, his sister Amig, his brother Adam Juknavarian and his wife Saucy, and his other brother Dr. Ara Juknavarian and his wife Milka. He was predeceased by his wife Helene and his sister Rose. We offer our condolences to the family relatives and many friends as I would also lastly conclude that I would like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for all those who have passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to ask that we dock in the chambers for the following. First, Paul Anthony McDonald. Paul Anthony McDonald, seventy-two, of South Dennis, Mass., and a longtime resident of Lowell, Mass. Passed away unexpectedly on Friday, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. He leaves behind his wife of forty-nine years Kathleen Farley McDonald. Paul was born to Paul and Helen McDonald on June seventeenth, nineteen forty-eight, and grew up in the Highlands section of Lowell. He attended Keith Academy and graduated from Newman School in Boston before earning his bachelor's degree from Suffolk University. Paul began his career as a teacher in Lowell Public Schools and found his true passion and talent in educational publishing. After taking a job in sales with Layla Brothers, Paul built a very long and successful career in the book business as a sales executive first at Scott Forsman and then at Pearson. He retired from Pearson in two thousand six as the regional vice president for the Northeast after a thirty-year career. During that time, he built incredible bonds and friendships with customers and colleagues alike, mentoring many new sales professionals along the way. Paul was born a born entertainer in every way, whether hosting extravagant Christmas Eve dinners for his extended family, filling the house with friends at their annual Saint Patrick's Day party while sitting down to play the hotel lobby piano for everyone during one of his many business trips. Paul was always the life of the party. Paul was very active and especially loved his racquetball games at the Lowell Y and his winter skiing at Attitash. Nothing was more important to Paul than his family, which was evident from the loving forty-nine years he spent with his wife Kathleen and the twinkle that appeared in his eyes when he proudly shared stories about his children, Scott and Kate. He cherished Long Beach days with his wife, heat trips with his kids, and any opportunity for an amazing meal and great stories with his family seated around the table. Despite suffering a stroke that left him partially paralyzed, Paul never lost his quick wit and positive spirit. After moving full-time to the Cape, quickly made friends in his new neighborhood and through the newcomers club, he still loved to entertain, employing the help of his friends and family to make his delicious dishes and impeccable cocktails, passing on all of his famous recipes and the joy of entertaining to his loved ones. Paul's Catholic faith was always important out of his life. In Lowell, he was a member of the Immaculate Conception Parish and after moving to the Cape, he became a member of the Saint Pius X in South Yama. In addition to his wife Kathleen, Paul leaves his daughter Caitlin McDonald, South Boston, his two brothers Brian McDonald and Carol Coffey of Swampscott, Mass., and Delray Beach, Laura, and Mark McDonald of Lowell, Mass. His daughter-in-law Janie Green McDonald of New York, his sister-in-law Mary Jane Farley Venice, and many beloved nieces and nephews who was predeceased by his son Paul Scott McDonald in two thousand nineteen. Uh, he was a friend to many, may his soul rest in peace. Next, I would ask that we also dock in the chambers and have a moment of silence for Charles Zerulis. Attorney Charles Zerulis died at Lowell General Hospital on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one with his wife at his side of complications due to COVID-nineteen. He is survived by his beloved wife for thirty-four years Jacqueline Rochette Zerulis. He'll be lovelily remembered by his daughters Catherine Zerulis of Lexington, Mass., and Alexandra Zerulis and husband Alexandra Zerulis and husband William Hanson Junior of Newton, Mass. Papu cherished his beloved young granddaughters Kenny, wife Karen Theodora of Tuxbury, and Nancy Zerulis Sullivan of Newton, who was his first wife and is the mother of his daughter, daughters. His nephew James Zerulis of Lowell, his niece Maria Zerulis Saunders, and husband Jeffrey of Tuxbury, Mass. And his cousins James Zerulis and his wife Claire McKenna of Ipswich, Mass. Charles was predeceased by his parents James Zerulis and Sophia Thicopolous Zerulis and his brother George Zerulis. He's a cousin to the Delakis, Baracus, Sappasaris, and Zerulis family. In addition, Charles is survived by his stepchildren Mark Reynolds, wife Julia Anne of Pembroke, New Hampshire, Cheryl Lewis Losier, and husband David of Tuxbury, Mass., and Paul Reynolds and wife Melissa of Shemsford, Mass. His step-grandchildren Jamie Lee Muesen, Cory, and Christopher Reynolds, Zachary and Susan Reynolds, and step-granddaughter Clark and Elia Reynolds, and step-grandson Jeremiah and James Reynolds. Charles was born and raised in the Aker section of Lowell. He graduated from the Butler School Lowell High School and Suffolk University with a Bachelor of Arts degree from Suffolk Law School with a Juris Doctor degree. He was admitted to the legal bar in nineteen fifty-nine and served in the United States Army from nineteen sixty-one to nineteen sixty-five and was awarded the Army Commendation Ribbon for meritorious service. Thereafter, Attorney Zerulis entered into private practice of law. He served as Town Council for the town of Tuxbury from nineteen sixty-eight, two thousand twenty-one, and Town Council to the town of Kingsborough from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand eighteen. He also served as School District Council within the Shoba Valley Technical High School District for more than twenty-five years and Special Council for various other municipalities. Attorney Zerulis was founded and original incorporated of Merrimack Valley Legal Services Incorporated, now called Northeast Legal Aid Incorporated, providing legal service for low-income clients. He served as Director, President, trustee of the Greater Lowell Family YMCA for over forty years and was past President and Executive Director for the Massachusetts City Solicitors and Town Council Association, now called the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association Incorporated and was a past President. For thirty years of childhood and his wife Franklin maintained a home first in Ashland, New Hampshire, and then in Sandwich, New Hampshire, where they enjoyed the company of family and friends on many ski weekends in winter, beach, beach and boating weekends in the summer, and the annual sandwich fair in the fall. During the years in Sandwich, New Hampshire, they enjoyed many cultural events and recreational activities in the Lake Region and in the several mountain ranges in the area. Charles was an avid vegetable god. His leeks and carrots won him blue ribbons at the annual sandwich fair. He and Jackie took great pleasure in observing many species of birds and other wildlife in the meadows adjacent to their yellow house and especially enjoyed their many sandwich friends. Uh, he will truly be missed. He was very active and did much for the work for the children of the city of Lowell through his efforts at the YMCA. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other memorials? I just have two quick ones. Moment of silence for Robert J. Bob Leonard, father, grandfather, brother, uncle, friend, teacher, U.S. Marine Corps Vietnam War veteran. Bob Leonard was a longtime Lowell resident, passed away natural causes at age seventy-three on Friday, January twenty-first. Uh, Bob was born to William and Avis Leonard nineteen forty-seven in Boston, Mass. Uh, he, excuse me, he has two sisters Anne and Karen Leonard. Um, Bob was a United States Marine, uh, veteran who was in the Corps from nineteen sixty-six. He served in Vietnam for a year and then stayed into the Marine Corps Reserve until nineteen seventy-two. While Bob was in Lowell, he worked full-time as a teacher in Lowell Public School System for sixteen years and part-time, uh, for additional two years. Bob taught special education, history, and social studies to children during the day as well as English as a second language to, uh, many adults in the evening. Uh, Bob is survived by his three children, his two sons Jason and Andrew, and his daughter Giles. He will be sadly missed. Um, moment of silence for Eugene Gignac. He passed away a week ago after a long courageous battle with cancer. He leaves behind his wife Linda and their three stepdaughters, Celine, Amy, and Chantel. Uh, Bob, uh, excuse me, Eugene Gignac is also the great uncle of, um, former Lowell School Committee member, Robert Gignac. Do we have a moment of silence? Thank you. Uh, next on the mayor's business, we have communication of remote Zoom participation. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Mercy, a second by Counselor Chow. Um, we have a communication that the council chambers will be closed for renovations. We'll have more on that during communications. I have one thing, uh, that didn't get on here before we get into the auditor. We have Dave Diamond somewhere on the screen. Uh, Dave's retiring later this month. I thought maybe without, if we didn't have the storm, we'd have him in the chambers tonight. But, um, I wanted to recognize Dave as the council did and present him with, uh, his citation and a key to the city. Uh, it reads, "Be it here known to all that the city of Lowell, Homewell, Massachusetts, hereby offers its sincere gratitude and congratulations to Dave Diamond upon his well-deserved retirement as Deputy Commissioner of Streets for the Department of Public Works in forty-four years." Forty-four years he served the city of Lowell. I thought you'd make it to forty-five, Dave, but you know. Uh, Dave has had a long career with the city of Lowell, working in different departments and eventually working his way up to Deputy Commissioner of Streets in two thousand nineteen. He started with the city initially in January of nineteen seventy-seven where he was hired as a drive-up for the council and aging. In May of nineteen eighty-seven, he transferred to DPW as the motor equipment operator. Then was promoted two years later to working foreman and then MEO Grade Three in nineteen eighty-nine. Dave's endeavors for the city and his many years of service will be remembered and appreciated for many years to come. Now therefore, I, Mayor John Leahy, hereby offer all the best to Dave upon his retirement and present this key to the city, uh, to him. The city of Lowell extends its deepest appreciation, appreciation to Dave and is proud to honor this distinguished individual for his many years of dedicated service given this ninth day of February twenty-twenty-one by myself and the entire city council. Dave, congratulations. Um, I know you have a few more days, but, uh, we wanted to recognize you and thank you. If you're there and you want to say something, Dave, I see you sitting at your desk. Just unmute, Dave. There you go.
Hi, um, I want to thank you very much for acknowledging, uh, Mayor. I want to thank the manager, Donahue, the counselors, and it's been a pleasure to work for the city of Lowell. Um, I love the city and, um, so all I can say is thank you very much.
Thank you for all your dedicated and hard work. Counselor Mercy?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I too want to offer my sincere thanks for all your service throughout the many, many years that you served. It has been an honor and a pleasure to know you personally, Dave. You're a remarkable employee and I will tell you, it's gonna take five people to fill your shoes. If there was a vehicle with wheels on it, no matter how big, you could drive it. So I'm very proud of your accomplishments and you're a wonderful human being. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, just very briefly along those same lines as Counselor Mercy. We can't thank you forty-four years, um, snowstorms, um, answering the call all the time. It's just that you're gonna be sadly missed, you'll be hard to replace, but I, I just want to thank you for, for everything that you did, always responsive, and wish you the very best, uh, in the times to come. You, you certainly have earned it, so thank, thank you again, Dave.
Thank you. Counselor Rock?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, and especially for, for bringing Dave forward and honoring him tonight. Uh, you know, Dave and his family have been close friends with my family, uh, for, for a long, long time. Uh, my aunts and my dad, my uncle wish you the best of luck and congratulations on your retirement. And, uh, they all said that we should see you in Butch's backyard pretty soon. Congratulations, Dave, and, uh, you'll be missed. Take care, Bill.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Clancy?
I, I've been here for about a year, but working with Dave has been great and he really, um, he really has been tremendous support, especially during these snowstorms. Uh, one thing about Dave, he always answers the phone. Um, I mean, any hour of the night, he's always, you know, quick to respond. Um, and he really, uh, it will be hard to fill his shoes. So thank you, Dave, for all the work you've done and it's been great working with you.
To, um, Manager Donahue?
Thank you. I just want to echo the sentiments today, uh, from the counselors and the commissioner. Dave, you are really one of a kind. Uh, it will be not just difficult, impossible to replace you. And, uh, you're, you not only have been an outstanding employee and credit to the city of Lowell, but you are a true gentleman and have just been a wonderful, uh, a wonderful tribute, um, to, to the city. And we will miss you very much. And as expected, your last, um, month, uh, February twenty-twenty-one is going out like a lion. And, uh, just so that you know, you're probably, uh, not making the wrong decision, but thank you. You will do the best in retirement.
Thank you. Counselor New?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to join everyone to congratulate Dave of the resident of Lowell for spending four decades of your life serving the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Ralfo? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
It'll be down here at City Hall anytime. It's wrapped in plastic as Counselor Rock knows for, uh, protection. Big snowstorm out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, next we'll get into, um, uh, we have, we can bundle these, uh, next items, so we need a motion. Okay, so. So why don't we do the auditor's business next? We're, we also have a couple of motions. So, um, why don't we suspend the rules just to bring everything together by Counselor Drinkwater, a second by Counselor Rock. So, um, we have two motions that basically, uh, nine-ten, myself requests council begin discussion regarding hiring a new council auditor and, uh, and then the, oh, uh, nine-seven by Counselor Elliott and Counselor Conway request city council discuss setting up the process to expedite the hiring of the city auditors. So we have those two motions. We can get to the vote first, to hire the intern, and then we'll get to the discussion on the process of the hiring. So, two-three, appoint interim city auditor Cheryl Wright. So we have a vote. Homewell, Massachusetts, City of Lowell, in city council, vote to accept and approve the appointment of Cheryl Wright for the position of interim city auditor for a three-month period and establish a salary of seventy-five dollars per hour for approximately twenty hours per week effective February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. Any discussion on this? Do a Councilor Mercy? Just unmute, Councilor. Thank you.
Thank you. God knows I don't want to be talking all this time and nobody heard me, but thank you so much. I'm very honored to have, to be doing this, and I do make the motion. We know Cheryl Wright for many years ago, and she has always, like, like Dave, she has been a credit to the city as well. So I'm very happy to make that motion to, in support of bringing Cheryl Wright back. Thank you.
Okay, motion by Councilor Mercy, a second by Councilor Elliot. Councilor Elliot, did you have anything?
Thank you. No, given the timeframe that they just invoked at home, so they know, given the timeframe that the auditor will be leaving in a couple of weeks, I think it's important to have good transition, to have somebody that knows the office, that's willing to come back and is available to fill in in the interims. If you recall, the last time, we did have the assistant auditor fill in, probably more than once, and she was kind enough to do that. However, we need, it's not fair to her, and it's also important that we have somebody else in there to continue to run the office. So I support this. So, I mean, it's twenty hours a week, and it's going to be important as we continue to look to close the books and get through the fiscal year. So I'll support this for sure, and it's good that we have somebody that we can rely on. Last time, we had to go out to a public accounting firm to get somebody, so this is, this will benefit us.
Thank you. Motion by Councilor Mercy, a second by Councilor Elliot. Any other discussion before the vote? Roll call.
Councilor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercy?
Yes.
Councilor New?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, for the motions, basically, Councilor Elliot, Councilor Conway, Councilor Elliot first, anything on the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important that we establish the process and we do it in a timely manner. We know the last time this kind of dragged on quite some time. I know that in the past, there's been criteria to, or requirement, maybe it was recommended or not, I can't recall, but I still personally don't feel that we need to require someone that has a certified public accountant, CPA. The reason for it is the education and the certification is different. We need somebody that has municipal finance background, that has experience in municipal finance. So it was recommended in the past, and I, I think it's an impediment for us to get candidates. So I think that we should consider taking that requirement out, and, and we need someone with municipal experience. The other thing I'd like to look at is we, we seem to be losing auditors to better-paying jobs, so I'd like to see if we can get the city manager's office, Mary Calery, to do a survey of comparisons with other communities. I believe we did that in the past, but, you know, we went through this process a number of times when we, before we hired this Marcello, and I think we need to take a look at what's working, what's not working, and maybe even consider, you know, where we're going to post this. I know we've spent money, two thousand dollars, to put it in the Boston Globe. I don't think we need to do that. I don't think that's where we're going to get candidates. So I think we need to go to the Town Accountants and Auditors Association, the Mass Municipal, you know, those are all online. I don't believe that we're going to get candidates out of the, out of these, you know, major publications like we once did in the past. So I, I know there's a number of issues, but I, I'd like to make a number of motions. One is that we do not require someone to have a CPA any further, because I think that's restricting the number of candidates that will apply.
Okay, so is there a motion? Sure, put that up for discussion. Is there a second on the motion that a CPA not be required? Councilor Mercy? Any discussion?
Yes, I do have a discussion, because not only are we here with these two motions, but I think that we should, we will have to know when the ads will be in, what ads will we place. I would suggest that we mirror everything that we did the very last time. Mary Calery must have a list of all the places that we went to the Globe, the Municipal Association, the MGFOA, Government Finance Office Association, and we could mirror everything that we did before. I would request that each name be, be put on a list of a spreadsheet so that we could, like she did before, it was much easier to figure it out. And let's say, for example, we have twelve people, like we did one time, now we're down to five, and then work with those five. These are the things that I'm concerned about. How long should the ads be in the paper? When will the ads begin? What date are we looking for to find someone? You know, do we have a set time? And just things like that that we'd like to talk about. So I don't know if you want to have a special meeting to discuss this. I don't think it's easy to discuss it at a city council meeting with everything on our plate, but I know that I have faith in Mary Calery, who I'm sure will do the right thing and, and structure it like she did in the past, because it always worked out very well for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Samaras and Councilor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Elliot brings up an important point, in a sense that we truly are looking for people with municipal experience. The issue is, I sort of have a hard time, though, you know, giving up the CPA aspect of it. But the thing is, we did, you know, in past, when we've looked at candidates, we've had many candidates with CPAs, but very little experience with city work. So I have, I have mixed feelings about this at this particular point. Is it possible that we could actually, you know, sit up and have some type of discussion over this to ensure the, two things. One, that we get a candidate that meets the qualifications that we feel are important to the City of Lowell, and Councilor Conway also brought up another point, we have been losing auditors because of salary and things like that. So I think it really has to be discussed. So that's, that's where I'm at at this point. I'm not sure where, at this point, where I'm going to go with regarding the audit, the auditors having a CPA or not. Two important points were raised regarding this issue, but I think we perhaps should have some further discussion. That's my opinion. Thank you.
All right, maybe we should send this to a subcommittee as soon as possible. If you want to make a substitute motion, Councilor Elliot, and then we can frame and get all the discussion in. You think that might be a better idea?
Yes.
If it wants to go to a subcommittee, that's fine, but, you know, if we're going to post this for three weeks, it'll take, you know, a week to get it out there, and I'm not really sure what we're going to change. I think the process, as Council Mercy said, was a good one, with the exception of, I'd just like to know how much we spent on the Boston Globe. But, you know, Councilor Samaras, to make a point, we put a CPA, and we're getting someone that with a sort of, with a CPA background, but they have no municipal experience, and it's not very helpful. You know, the pay scale for CPAs are vastly different from municipal accountants. So I, I understand the point, but I just don't feel that having that requirement makes sense for the City of Lowell. I don't know what other postings put up, but what I've seen is not, is not a CPA requirement. So, I don't know, I just, I think it's important for us to, you know, I don't think our agenda is that long for tonight. I'd just like to make a decision so we can put the posting in the newspaper. I don't think it's going to be that dramatically different from what we've done in the past.
Okay, Councilor Conway?
Then again, I, you know, I understand the salary issue, so whatever the council wants to do, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it might be a good idea to, to take up Councilor Mercy's idea about having, having a separate, a separate meeting on this, because, to be quite frank with you, I know that, in my humble opinion, I thought the process was, and I'm not putting blame on any particular individual, I think it was just the circumstances, it was, it was, should we say, rather messy. I think, first of all, I think the salary is extremely important to be competitive, and these are some of the things I think we can talk about. Also, you know, I, I'd like to see the process streamlined a bit and perhaps even run it out of, you know, the city manager, obviously, and her team be working with this individual. I don't necessarily see anything wrong with coming up with a, a committee and perhaps a representative, I'm just throwing this out as a suggestion, a representative from the city council to be on that, that, excuse me, that committee that might be vetting out these individuals. And also, I think it's, you know, it might speed the process up and perhaps even identify a qualified pool of candidates for us, so that we can interview and ultimately pick the, pick the auditor. The auditor's still being obviously responsible to us, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out a way to streamline it so we don't, we don't run into some of the problems that we had last time, and it took quite a while to do that process. So I, and I know that in many areas, this is the way it's done. And again, you've got the city manager's office, and the CFO is obviously going to be working close with this, this office, too. So I think it might be a good idea to, to have a meeting so that we can discuss this in perhaps a little bit more detail.
All right, Councilor Elliot?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we refer this item to the Audit Clerk slash Personnel Subcommittee for report and recommendation by, as suggested by others. Make sense to come back with a clear criteria, clear guidelines, and, and then.
Okay, so withdraw the first motion, substitute motion by Councilor Elliot, seconded by Councilor Mercy. We'll send it to the auditor, clerk auditor Subcommittee. And we'll set it up as soon as possible, then?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I just wanted to say, I know Mary Calery has a lot of the information that is being discussed. You can put that together. I know she can present it, we can update the salary question and bring all that information to the Subcommittee whenever, as soon as you schedule.
Okay, all right. So we'll make a motion to do that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and I think Councilor Samaras, that's your Subcommittee, so we'll set it up as soon as possible.
All right, can we do it for the, before the next meeting?
Yeah, preferably, yeah. You want to do it next Tuesday?
We have, we have the Finance Committee next Tuesday. Can we do it the following Tuesday?
You know, Councilor Samaras, I'll reschedule my, I'll reschedule that Finance Subcommittee to the following Tuesday.
All right, thank you. Then we'll, we'll do it next Tuesday.
All right, February sixteenth.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, man, manager, or anything else? All set? Okay. Ms. Calery, all set?
Yeah, like the manager said, I have the information tonight. If anybody has any questions, if not, I'll have them ready for the next Tuesday.
Okay, I know you wanted to give a big speech tonight, but we'll let you off the hook, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, sure, Councilor Elliot?
Can I just ask just one more question that prior to the audit oversight of Committee Ten, I know there was some salary information in the past, but can we look at, you know, some of the smaller towns and what their salary ranges are and the criteria they use? Because I think what we've, you know, it's going to be publicly advertised, but we have to appeal to those individuals that will come and want to stay with the city for, and make a career out of it, and not just sort of a stepping stone with, or not a stepping stone, but I think we need, really need to look at, how can we attract and maintain an auditor for a long period of time, given the fact that we've, you know, going through auditors rather, rather quickly? I think if you look at what the salaries are in smaller towns and what the, what the criteria is, what their experience and what they look for, I think we can, that'll benefit the Subcommittee to develop that job description.
Okay, well, I'll get that done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the city clerk, and then right into the public hearing. City clerk business, three-one minutes of the Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee for approval, January twenty-sixth. City council regular meeting, January twenty-sixth. Need a motion for acceptance placed on file by Councilor Samaras, seconded by Councilor New. All those in favor, say aye. Next, being up to seven o'clock, we have utility public hearing, four-one, Verizon requests permission to install twelve-four-inch PVC telephone conduit on Middlesex Street from Thorndike Street to Canal Street. Given the second reading, open up the hearing to all those in favor. All those in favor? Nobody registered this? All those in favor? That portion is closed. Open it up to anyone in opposition? 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 Hearing none, that portion of the meeting's closed, of the hearings closed. Need a motion revert, refer to the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Councilor Clark, seconded by Councilor Conway. All those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Councilor Mercy?
I have a question on this particular public hearing, and I wish someone was here. I just wanted to know, has there a notification to a but has taken place already? Do we know that?
Pretty sure that was sent out, Councilor.
That notifications were sent out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Communications to the city manager. Motion response, A, nonprofit partners, any questions on that?
Mayor?
Sure. Councilor Rourke, then Councilor Conway?
Thank you. You know, there's a lot of information in this, in the report, you know, it was well put together, but if either the manager or Mr. Baller want to just go over it real quick, you know, I think the motion was made to show the partnership that the city has with our nonprofits, you know, and with our youth or, you know, homeless, our housing, you know, recognition and see what we could do for low and medium-income families in the city. There's a lot of information in here that is all really good stuff, you know, I think from sharing grants to expansion grants as well, you know, cultural stuff, education, energy. So, you know, maybe if, you know, the manager or Mr. Baller has, maybe, you know, a quick couple of measures to go over it, and just to really show what the city does do for outreach for our nonprofits, and in turn, for, for those that most need it in the city. Thank you.
Mr. Man, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could make some comments first, because on my motion, on that motion response, if that's all right with, with the council?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. I, I appreciate it. Uh, uh, first of all, I, I, I would like to thank the city manager, Conner Baldwin, and, uh, and the team, uh, for this report. Um, I certainly appreciate the work, uh, and the great detail of reaching out to our nonprofits, uh, for their information. I have often said that one of our greatest strengths, uh, in law, the partnerships, UMass Law, Middlesex, uh, business community and our nonprofits, uh, we work as a team, as a unit, uh, for the success of our city and our people. And I think in recent months, there have been, uh, individuals and organizations that, uh, say that there, uh, is more that can be done and should be done. And to be quite frank with you, I, I, I don't disagree at all. And I believe that this administration, uh, and the council, uh, have listened and, and, and always will continue to listen. Um, the, excuse me, I think that, uh, one of the major problems that have come out in the discussions in the last few, uh, uh, last few months is the single adult, uh, homeless housing. And according to the, uh, National Center for Charitable Statistics, uh, there are more than, uh, one and a half million nonprofit organizations that are registered here in the United States. Uh, and having said that, I think we need to reach out to nonprofits that, uh, specialize in single adult homeless housing, uh, in other areas that law, uh, has a need for. And, you know, because of this, and again, as Council Roach said, uh, it's a, it's a very, very detailed report. And, um, I think that, uh, uh, there's a tremendous amount of data here. And, and I'd actually like to see this, uh, motion response, uh, to be referred, uh, to the finance subcommittee so that we can further study this in a, in a lot more detail. And again, I think there's, there's nothing wrong with, uh, hearing a, a synopsis of it tonight. But I think that because there's so much information material, I, I think it warrants, uh, time in the subcommittee so we can really vet this out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think this is a good response, good motion by Council Roach and yourself. Um, so you want to make a motion to refer to the, which committee again?
The finance subcommittee.
Okay, seconded by Council Roach. Um, any other discussion, Madam Manager?
No, Mr. Mayor, I think that's, um, a, a, a wise move. Uh, there is a lot of information in here and I know Connor Baldwin, the Craig Thomas from DPP, put, um, a, a tremendous amount of work. And I think it will be helpful to have a subcommittee meeting to, uh, dig into the information and data, uh, so that there can be a more full presentation.
Thank you. Um, next motion response by Department Brownout. Any questions, Council Mercia, then Council Roach?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report is very interesting and also informative, giving us a breakdown of the finances through the years. However, I'm concerned with the present and what is happening right now. This report is telling us, here's where we are and why, but what is lacking in this report is my motion question. What plans do we have to keep stations open? We learned from this report that sick time is on the rise. I'm not surprised to hear that sick time's on the rise. When calls are made in this city, who is the first responders on the scene? Firefighters. Many of the calls are directed to the homeless, are people who overdose and need help. Firefighters could be and are exposed to everything that is out there and COVID is at the top of the list. I am not surprised to hear that sick time has increased. If a firefighter gets sick on the job from that exposure and must quarantine for two weeks, they go out on a one eleven F and the city pays for that. But there has been cases where firefighters who were not on duty and were exposed to the virus and even while testing negative, must still quarantine for two weeks and not get paid, even while testing negative. I find that kind of strange, but if that's a rule, then that's why firefighters are out. The report again tells us where the problem lies, but I do not see a plan in place to correct it. What I didn't see in the report was the fact that our goal has always been to keep a full complement of firefighters at two thirteen. We have nine open positions which are fully funded and a budget to the sum of four hundred and eighty-six thousand plus dollars. And recently, two firefighters just retired, leaving us down eleven employees. So my question to you, and I know that the chief Sharon is there. Chief, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, how many positions are not filled while there is money available in the budget? Do you know?
We're slated for two hundred and thirteen and we're down to one ninety-nine.
So you doubt, how, what's the math on that?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. I, I, I'm appalled by it, but do you intend to fill these positions to offset the closing?
Absolutely. The, uh, plan actually has parts and the middle part of that, uh, involves the hiring of new individuals. We've actually started, um, the process of getting information regarding putting additional six individuals, um, into the, through the hiring process. It's important to remember that the hiring process was stunted over the course of last year, especially, uh, in the middle and towards the end. Uh, the academy was not having any of their firefighter one and two classes. It was very difficult, if not impossible, to get physicals, uh, scheduled, so hiring was, uh, stunted because of that reason. But that is the middle part of the plan, that we would like to see more hiring to get ourselves back up to that higher number and we've started working in that direction.
Okay, good. Now, honest to God, I realize you're relatively new in this position, so, um, to put you in this, in the middle here, I, I didn't want to really do that because I know you're relatively new. But perhaps you and the manager can discuss a plan together as to what's going on here to prevent these future brownouts. But let me ask you this, i- is it your responsibility to choose to fill those positions or do you need permission from the manager to do that? How does that work?
I make the, uh, recommendations to the manager and then she'll sign off on it.
So I'm assuming she will?
I'm, I'm.
Council Mercia?
And Amanda?
I think as, as the chief has said, because of the pandemic, we couldn't have the academies, the fire academies weren't operating. And it was an issue of just getting the, you know, access for training and access for physicals. But, you know, as, as you can see from the budget, we have budgeted for these positions and we intend to build the position. There's always a fluctuation, but this year was, uh, unique because of the pandemic.
And we also learned through another report that there is not only money available from the CARES Act, but through FEMA public assistance and health and human services to support emergency operations. FEMA PA does not have a ceiling amount based on actual costs incurred by the city for certain activities that fall within FEMA definition of emergency protective measures, generally limited to the police, fire and certain health operations. I should think that because of COVID bringing us into an emergency setting and with the protective measures such as firefighters protection and safety for our residents, that we may hop on the bandwagon and plan and into the brownout. So I'm sure there's people out there that might be coming from other areas that want to transfer over. Maybe we could look at that possibility, but thank you for the report. I'm just very concerned. I, I, I don't want to burden our firefighters. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. And I think the chief, um, as he had said in the report, you know, the plan is to reduce brownouts.
Okay.
Explanation of where we got, but certainly going forward and through the end of the fiscal year, we, the chief, uh, seems pretty confident that he can do that based on where we have in the financing.
Sure. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Roach.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, a few years ago, when, uh, the city law was, was given the grant of, yeah, twelve, uh, additional firefighters, I think it was either a two or a three-year, um, s- grant that to create the salaries. Um, you know, because I was part of that, I, I still get the emails on the sharing grants and the safer grants and things like that. Is, um, our grant writer, is, is she aware? I, I know right now that there's an open safer grant on the federal level that I think just opened up maybe yesterday, uh, or last Friday. Uh, again, I, I believe it's a multi-year, uh, grant that pays a full salary of firefighters. Uh, chief?
Chief?
Yes, um, we are currently working off the last safer grant, uh, which was extended for several months, uh, off of the last, um, four individuals that were hired. Uh, there is another one open at this time, um, and if we move relatively quickly to, um, secure spots for up to six, two individuals, we may be able to get the same grant to cover that.
Right, it's also, I, I know that the department also does equipment, trucks, things like that, you know, I believe, uh, there was a motion filed, you know, a year or two ago about, uh, washing machines, special ones that, you know, take care of the, of the gear and so forth. Um, you know, but I guess right now that the major point is the personnel, right? The, the shortage of the staff.
Yes, I think Council referring to the, uh, just the firefighters grant, the AFG grant, uh, we will be, that again this year. We try to apply every single year, um, and it has been beneficial for us in the past, but it's generally not used for the manpower.
Okay, but the one I thought right now, the safer grant is almost strictly manpower, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I would expect that to be an application for that?
Absolutely.
Right, right. Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Madam Manager?
On that point, we were made aware, um, I believe, Connor, it was by Mary Ann Bala Manzi, um, of, of the AFG grant that, um, we, we will pursue. Uh, this is for, uh, a, a fire truck, Connor, if you, you may have more of the details, but we were just made aware of this over the week, so, um, we're, we're pursuing that as well.
That's right.
Okay. All right, that's, okay, so we'll look into that. Any other discussion on this motion? Uh, next motion, response, um, workforce demographics, Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Connor Baldwin, CFO, for preparing this report. Um, you know, this, this motion and the request, um, as everyone knows, it, uh, it's a complex and it's a long-term matter. And your response, Mr. Baldwin, you address, um, the complexity and also outlined the, the future plan for this. And it is very much tied to the human resource audit, um, that, uh, Bloom Shapiro is going to do in the next, uh, uh, three, four months. And that's when we can come up with a, with a better plan to give us a better mapping of how we're gonna, um, put this motion in, into play. I know that they're going to look at the hiring practices and, uh, include in the, uh, policy practices, um, of, of working and the business operation to include the diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, that, that, that's great. Um, I wonder if, uh, Mr. Baldwin can speak a little bit on? I know that, um, as part of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, there is a, a workforce characteristic, um, that's put in the appendix, uh, to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. If you could explain that a little bit, um, number one. And number two, I see here in the report, um, you know, we're in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. But I see that the plan, uh, even with the report coming in the next few months, uh, the plan is not being, um, uh, go and try to come up with a plan until fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um, might be the, you know, to me anyway, and to the, the public, uh, who have read this report, it seems like there's a fiscal year twenty twenty-two gap. Um, if you could explain that, um, a little bit, we'd appreciate it. Mr. Baldwin?
Sure, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and thank you for the question. Uh, so in, in the response provided to the motion, uh, we do discuss the section of the budget which, um, describes the workforce demographics and characteristics, which would be a natural part. It's an appendix to the budget, which is a more than just the finances of the city. It's a communication tool for the administration on an angle. That this section will be built out as it is informed by the HR audit, which is currently, um, which is currently ongoing. So with the results of the audit, which will likely have, uh, recommendations, we can incorporate those, uh, with how we already frame the budget for goals, objectives, and, and then we can track progress against it. And, and to your question specifically, Counselor, it's important to remember where we are in the budget process and we're already, um, uh, well into the FY twenty twenty-two process. It was last Friday when departments, uh, submitted their requests for the twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, and, and very soon, uh, it will be the spring before we know it and we will be bringing that budget for the council for consideration and approval. So it will be, uh, and after the audit, the HR audit is complete, that we'll be able to incorporate some of those findings and goals into our twenty twenty-three budget. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, thank you with that, uh, response. I, I look at this report as, uh, being very positive and I, I thank you, uh, Madam Manager, for keeping this motion in mind as the, um, audit report, uh, come along. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, next motion response, uh, any questions on the, um, ACT CARES Act funding, Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the report. Um, I know that, uh, we talked a little bit about it, the finance subcommittee, and I have no, uh, other, um, uh, comment to it except that, you know, I'm, I'm glad that the federal government extend this to, uh, you know, December twenty, uh, twenty-one. So which is, um, I understand also that the manager has been diligently allocated money, uh, for the going that the, um, the CARE Act, uh, you know, the, the second wave of CARE Act will come and that we have sufficient money to use for, for what we need to address the COVID nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this one? Uh, next motion response, the COVID vaccination sites, Council Roach?
Uh, thanks, Sir Mayor. I did see that it opened yesterday. Um, I just feel we're concerned that, I guess, I would have, I believe, everybody would. Uh, I, I am seeing that there are certain sites, uh, statewide that at the end of the day, uh, I guess throwing away vaccinations. Uh, do we have a, uh, protocol in place, uh, through law general that, you know, none of them get wasted? Or if, if, um, you know, we do have no-shows or extra vaccinations, there's something in place to be done not to, uh, to throw them away?
Madam Manager?
Thank you. Uh, so our, our, um, priority is not to waste any vaccine whatsoever, whether it's at the, uh, our own clinic, at the senior center. Every vaccine is accounted for, uh, and very, very carefully counted out and, and kept very close tabs. There are no-shows, uh, in terms of what to do about those vaccines. And they don't, um, you know, and, and I'm referring to the senior center clinic, they don't draw, you know, a hundred out and hope for the best. They're, they're very careful and methodical. Uh, and I would suspect law general has a very similar, uh, process. Um, I, in terms of, um, the opening of that right now, this week, law general has been doing their own vaccines at the Clark Auditorium. Uh, this is for patients referred to them, uh, and that is what has, uh, changed over to one thousand and one, to Tuckett Boulevard this week. Uh, I know Shad Ahmed is on this, uh, Zoom who has worked closely with law general in connection with the logistics. Uh, and I know they're waiting to hear from the state as to, uh, when they will be afforded more vaccines so they can vaccinate more people. Uh, I, I am pretty confident we will confirm that, Counsel, that they are not throwing away any vaccines.
Yeah, I, I will pass the log, Madam Manager, that, uh, you know, since the senior center has been up and running with vaccinations, I've heard nothing but tremendous reports, uh, um, of, of getting in and getting vaccinated, getting shots and, uh, and so forth. So, you know, it's a real credit to the staff, um, over there, uh, you know, and to your quick actions to get that up and running. So, uh, you know, all the feedback from people that have been able to get to the senior center has been, uh, nothing but positive. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Samaras, any questions?
Yeah, no, thank you. And Madam Manager, thank you for the report. It was a great report. Uh, you know, the last meeting we talked about, you know, will the city have something, uh, beyond the senior center? And of course, now we have, uh, in cooperation with. Now we have in cooperation with Lowell General Hospital. But could you just review for our constituents who are watching tonight, you know, the sites, you know. Why they're, you know, that are available, but also you speak to helping with the communications regarding the taking of the tests. Because the state has had the state's program for the senior citizens to go in and get themselves set up for appointment has been. We'll say difficult to say the least, and you've talked about in the, in the motion about setting up in the motion response. About setting up a contract to assist implanting and public inquiry assistance, so if you could talk a little bit about that. And my second question, Councilor Roach also brought up in our last. Discussion regarding availability of the vaccine, the testing was busting to the site. Do you need a motion with the CARES money and other monies that you have that you could set up? Transportation in various areas of the city to be able to, especially our seniors, bust them up to the Pataca. The Pataca Street site, those are my two questions, Madam Manager.
Madam Manager.
Thank you, so in terms, just to review quickly, the, the three locations in the city where vaccines are available. You know, one is the Lowell Senior Center and that is, has been primarily in the beginning for our first responders. This, when the governor opened it up to seventy-five and older, we have now begun vaccinating seventy-five and older. This is an appointment system, it's based on the allotted vaccine that we are given by the state. And right now that is four hundred vaccines per week and the, the. Seniors can access it on the website, just M A immunizations dot org, I believe. But in addition, they can call the senior center, we do have. Individuals who are working hard, Willian Hartman and her, her team are helping seniors, we're having trouble navigating the website and they're working with them. Let me just also say the state set up a two-one-one system this week. Brand new, but the whole idea with that is to also assist seniors to navigate the website. And in addition to that, we have a contractor who was working with us. To try and not duplicate efforts, but make sure we're, we're reaching everybody who needs help in terms of trying to schedule a vaccine. As I mentioned previously, Lowell General Hospital will be heading up and, and we are in support of these efforts, have been working. With them, 1001 Pataca Boulevard. This site is expected to expand as far as the number of vaccines they will give over the weeks and months to come. Much depending on availability of vaccine, right now they're vaccinating their own patient referrals this week and that's about four hundred people a day. But they expect when it does open up for appointments and as soon as that's, they get the okay from the state, they'll make that announcement and we'll. Make sure we push that out to everybody through our social media. Channels and, and, and making sure everybody knows that that site is, is live, so to speak, and that they can get appointments there. Hopefully that will be in the, in the near future. Once that happens, the, the hospital expects that over time, when more vaccine becomes available, they will be able to vaccinate more people at that site. Right now, since it's not something that is, is where people can go. We haven't set up any type of direct transportation, but as we go forward, if there's a need, we will work to do that. I know the senior center is asking seniors if they need transportation even to the senior center and is working to, to afford them that. The Lowell General has the capability of ramping up. From, you know, the four hundred or eight hundred a day to multiple thousands of a day, three thousand, five thousand, depending on what the state has available to. To make available for that particular site. Let me also mention, and likewise, at our site, we will be working with the allotment that the state gives us. Right now, as I said, focusing on those who are in phase one. Our first responders, police and fire are getting their second vaccines this week. And also are over seventy-five year olds. But we're also going to be reaching out to individuals and we have established and worked with Shad and his team. So that we can make phone calls to people who may be housebound and they can't come to the senior center, they can't go to a site. And, and there are, you know, ways that we can try and address that and we're exploring that both in discussions with the state and, and. With a mobile effort to go to someone's house to vaccinate, so there are many, many moving pieces to this, but we're actively working on this every single day. To make sure that people who want to be vaccinated can be vaccinated. And we want to make it as accessible as possible, so. Shad, if you want to chime in on the two questions, if I've missed a point?
Sure, no, I think actually, Madam Manager, you summarized that very well. The only thing I would just add is the feds have changed direction in terms of eligibility for reimbursement quite drastically over the last thirty days. And we're seeing a lot of different movement now to cover costs that were previously ineligible. So I think, Counselor, you had a question on transportation and in terms of the cost, that is considered an eligible reimbursable expense. The only thing they won't cover basically is if we, you know, do individual transportation like a taxi or an Uber. But we can, and in fact, actually I had a conversation with the hospital about, you know, kind of doing some additional transportation, you know. Solutions there, so we're actively.
I know, I know that was a concern of theirs, you know?
Yeah, we're actually working with them on that as we.
Thank you, no, thank you for that report, Madam Manager, thank you for the good work, I mean. As Counselor Roach said, we've been getting a lot of calls as saying, I was satisfied people were with what's been happening at this particular point, thank you.
If, if, I may just, I, I think Shad just reminded of me or texted me that at the Lowell General site, the, the. Plan is to have wait lists, so if, if there is extra vaccine, people who would indicate that they'd be available on short notice. So there's a wait list.
Councilor Murcia? You're on mute again.
I too have received a few calls from people who, number one, said that. Things are running smoothly at the senior center, Joanne Keegan is doing a tremendous oversight job to make sure everything is running smoothly. People are even commenting saying the floors look spectacular, the custodians doing a tremendous job. I'm getting all kinds of calls like that, but I'm mostly, I have to say it, concerned about. The generosity and kindness of people during crisis, let me just say. There were two people, husband and wife, both retired, both registered nurses, willing to volunteer how many hours we need them to. I called up Joanne Keegan, I gave them their names and phone numbers. It's just amazing how people step up to the plate, if I might more or less take a point of personal privilege at this time. To thank all the kind neighbors in the city who helped their neighbors during and after this two-foot snowstorm last Tuesday and Wednesday. I heard these sentiments and comments quite often of neighbors offering to go to the store, helping to brush off snow off cars. Helping in whatever way a good neighbor could, just neighbors, neighbors helping neighbors in a spirit of unity and friendship. And I just felt that these good deeds shouldn't have gone unnoticed, just like that couple that are retired that want to give back to the city. So that's what we're facing, we always hear the bad, the tragedies of that. And I thought I'd bring in some goodness, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to reiterate all the comments that the council has made before, this is a great response. And I see Madam Manager really doing everything you can to answer all the concerns of residents. And especially trying to help that the seniors and elders try to go to senior center or the vaccination. I know that you even tried to, you mentioned earlier, even tried to reach to the seniors and elders who are homebound and no way of communicating to senior center. Or they're not part of that services, I think my, my question is more along that line. You have, it's always a case where somebody might not be part of any system at all. And even you try to reach them because there's no information on them, I'm not quite sure what the city can do or the public health department can do. But do you have a tracking system, are you working on a tracking system? To see how many, if they're in that category or phase two category. How many people should be getting vaccinated and how many people are not getting vaccinated? I'm, I'm just interested to see if, if we're gonna miss anybody or just have a tracking system off the percentage of success, so to speak. Of people that should be vaccinated and whether a hundred percent get vaccinated or only ninety percent get vaccinated. I'm just curious if there's any tracking system.
Madam Manager.
Yeah, so, so we, Joanne Keegan, the week ended before she started, was working hard on those lists for our over seventy-five, you know, between sixty-five, seventy-four. You know, working with Loto and others to try and come up with by-name lists, so that, and that's just one example, where, where. The exact numbers I don't have in front of me, but, you know, and, and this data was. From the 2019 survey, so that's why we need lots of volunteers to call through if people aren't showing up and to find out, so. It's a tedious process, but working with partners, working, you know, working with volunteers, working with staff. To try and outreach, I know Shad's, working with the contractor who's going to have people who speak. Multiple languages, because that's going to be another issue, Shad, I, I believe you have individuals who will speak. Mar, English, Spanish and.
Correct, yeah, that's what we're looking at right now.
Putting all this in place, Counselor, so that we can reach as many people. But it is a whole process and the state is, is also concerned and wants, you know, us to work with them and with our own communities. Trying to reach people who, who are not. Who are not coming forward voluntarily, either because they don't know or they're not, you know, there's going to be an education process and. Understand the vaccines, what's being offered and the like, so it's, there's a lot of work. To go into this over the next months, but it's all very important.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Next motion, any questions on the blue light? Blue light for a snow emergency, Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I did read the response, I will say I'm a little disappointed with the response. For a couple of reasons. And maybe I should have been a little bit more specific when I presented the motion. I didn't have any expectations that we were going to put blue lights throughout the entire city. And most communities, it's usually just in sort of highly. In areas where there are a central business district or neighborhoods where congestion could take place. I thought there would be a, I didn't want to revert back to an older antiquated system. Similar to when we got rid of the fire boxes in the city and replaced them with wireless, wireless mechanisms. I still do think, while I, I don't, I don't want to be doing the entire city. I, I just feel for this reason. Not everybody is on social media that will get a snow ban notification. Not everybody listens to the local radio station, particularly when it comes to people going into downtown, when it comes to students, and quite frankly, the city council gets two letters from. High school students that were very well-written and really outlined the essence of, of the problem. And if you just drive around the city after a snow emergency, you will find endless number of vehicles. Or that they have been towed. As a result of not getting the communication, so I know some of the older communities have it, they still use it and they have maybe an antiquated system. I, I do think, and I realize there may be some costs associated with it, but. I, I still do feel, given the number of snowstorms and the fact that not everybody gets these notifications and changes quite frequently. I, I do think it would be effective, I, I did read the report from the commissioner and. On the emergency operations director, I understand their point. And I, I don't completely disagree with it, however. There is still a, what I would think, a large number of people that are not going to get notifications, they're going to get towed. Or they're going to be stuck on the street when we could just strategically put some of these blue lights in the system in place, given we're in the Northeast, given we're in. Merrimack Valley car to let people know that there's no ban and it's going to help our, our pod drivers. As well as our police officers and fire, you know, firefighters that, you know, where they have to get out of their car and, and have to tow stuff, it's just, it's just a logistical life, so. I don't know if Christine or, wish I'd want to jump in, I, I do understand the point, but I, I do think in some parts in the city it would be worthwhile and so.
Or anybody want to jump in?
So I understand.
Yeah, sure, I can just start a little bit, you know, so obviously I think here it's, it's not that we were, you know, saying that it's not something that we would. You know, think would be effective, I certainly, I understand your point is well-taken, you know. I think we were just looking at this from a return on investment perspective, Commissioner Clancy and I looked at this in terms of costs as well. You know, there's a potential that even if we were to do a limited section of downtown, that this could go well into several hundred thousands, you know, just because of the investment that's needed in terms of infrastructure. You know, and Commissioner Clancy can speak to that a little bit, but, you know, there may be some, you know, depending on what existing electric as well as communication infrastructure is in place. You know, we may need to do trenching, we may need to do upgrades to electrical infrastructure, we may potentially need to do, you know, some wireless transmitters. There may be recurring costs associated with that, you know, and I, I can take a second to let Commissioner Clancy address anything there.
Sure, Shad, I think that's a great summary, in terms of the cost, I mean, so looking just at the downtown area, just thinking about, you know, trying to figure, trying to look at how many lights per street, so. Just thinking about the volume of lights, I know there's a recent figure that Shad came across, we were talking about it today. That this was actually looked at recently in Marblehead and that's, you know, that's a very small downtown area. They looked at adding six lights and what that cost would be, that was about twenty-five thousand dollars plus an annual licensing fee for six lights. And I think just to blanket the downtown area, that would easily add up to a couple hundred thousands of dollars. Because you'd have, I mean, the, you know, given the area of downtown. I mean, unless there was very targeted areas, but then I guess that's where we're only then focusing on a, you know, a few of those areas and. I don't know, I think Shad, maybe it's a good time to talk about Code Red a little bit, just to think that is, is something we're trying to push out more.
Yeah, so the, you know, another potential solution is to expand the current use of Code Red and how we utilize it so far. You know, the police department does a great job of just, you know, issuing those notifications. But I think something that certainly we can look at as a city and from my office is the adoption rate, you know, we certainly don't have anywhere. Near even to a quarter of folks, you know, the population, the residents in the city subscribe to the system. So, you know, we could certainly do outreach campaigns and trying to increase the utilization of Code Red. We can also look at some creative ways of, for instance, allowing residents to subscribe to different types of alert notifications through different means. You know, this is something that, it's a, you know, all across the country jurisdictions have looked at alerting over the years and. You know, you get a lot of people sometimes who say, well, I don't want to subscribe to that because I don't want to get this type of notice. You know, we can start doing segmented notifications through that, we can even reach people through email, you know, there's a lot of things that we could potentially expand upon. And, and at the very core, you know, if you're not listening to social media, if you're not listening to radio or TV, you know, we could do the same, you know, basically the. Like what's traditionally called reverse nine-one-one, but it's a, you know, we call you and let you know that there's an issue or that there's a parking van. So we can certainly look at other maybe approaches, just, we were kind of concerned about the potential cost, you know, between capital and recurring cost that could be, you know, resulting out of this.
I'm very aware of the capital costs. It'd be nice to sort of get a little bit more specific number. I'm not looking to spend any more money, given the deferred maintenance and the number of capital projects we have. I just feel that over the course of the time that I've been on the city council, parking and parking bans, is it on? Is it enforced? It is not. And we've had people, you know, they get their, their cars towed or they let them sit there for weeks on end. And, you know, just communication process. If I thought there was a better way that everybody, I mean, not everyone does have internet or cellphone or sign up for these notifications. So unless you're going to check the site, whether I'm parking or not, which is not going to happen. And lots of folks don't even know that they can go park in the parking garage. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this any longer. Maybe, you know, that's the, the motion response is, is as is, and I guess we'll just continue with the practice, which I, I just don't think is as effective as other communities like Manchester and Enfield and, and other, other communities that they clearly recognize. And I just say especially in Lowell where we get so much snow and we are in that, you know, high snow ban on a consistent basis. It helps clear the downtown in a more timely manner, but thank you for the report anyway.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? One suggestion too, when I'm just take advantage of the lighting on the Cox Bridge, we could always light that up a little. I don't know if that would be like a stat, but, you know, we have lights on it and we could do blue lights there, so. We could take that under advisement and try that for the, for the time being.
Anything will work, Mr. Mayor. Good suggestion.
All right. Thank you. CARES Act funding offset business fees. Councilor Chow, any questions on that?
Is the CARES Act mine or Councilor Noon?
Oh. I might have my papers mixed up, but whoever wants, any questions on this? Councilor Noon, Councilor Chow, anybody?
I think it's Councilor Elliot's motion.
I thought it was Danny Rook's motion. Really, I did.
Mr. Mayor, I'll say something.
Sure, somebody.
Yeah, so anyway, yeah, so I started with the liquor licenses and fees that I think I brought forward a few months ago. I know that the, the liquor commission has, has, I believe, waived a portion of this year's fees already. And just by recollection, it could be, I thought it was Councilor Elliot that recommended this to maybe backfill some of that money that, that went missing from giving a break to our downtown businesses and also our city businesses. So, you know, hopefully it's a positive. And I know that the, you know, the liquor commissioner is looking into what else can be done in partnership with the city to make it as easy on our businesses as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chow, then Councilor Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do have something to say, but I just didn't want to take credit for, for motion that, that wasn't mine. And I, I like the response. I know that the councillor and the administration look for every which way to have the small businesses and in this particular, the licensing fee and the permits and so forth. And I understand the reason why, why we can't do this because sort of pay back the city, as the report stated. But I just want to say that the economic development and the City Managed Office over the months have used the CARES Act, used the CARES funding to help the small business throughout the city wonderfully. And even if you can, this is more for, for the small business and for the public out there, even though we can't have in one particular case like this one. The city does use the CARES money to help assist small businesses in so many other ways. And so I appreciate this motion. They were always looking for more things to help the small businesses throughout the city. And I was thinking, and I appreciate the City Managed Office for always looking for different ways as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Elliot.
Yeah, I, I do recall Councilor Rook did bring this up, this discussion, and that the report was made as a result of a motion I did find, but when we were looking at extending outdoor seating under Councilor Rook's motion, I know this was raised and that was just a follow-up. I understand the purpose. I, I think the report does reflect our support to businesses, maybe not waiving, directly waiving fees, although I believe some licenses, license fees will waive or, or partial for some of the establishments downtown. But knowing that the CARES Act and the support from planning and development, the economic development office is given to business and it has been, and it has been significant. I, I think this helped, you know, more CARES Act funding is on the way. Maybe not specifically for businesses, but certainly for the city and then we can, we can continue to provide support. Thank you. It's a good report and and I know the businesses appreciate the help that we've, we've been able to give them.
Yes.
Sure. I can't see who's talking. Sure, Madam Manager.
I just wanted to add that I know Kristi McCall is on, who has been working with, as Councilor has, has mentioned, you know, other funds or, or loan funds or grant funds for businesses. And I don't know that, you know, she wanted her to mention a couple of others that are new ones that have come up. But every, every aspect, every pool of money that is possibly available, she and her team are out communicating to small businesses, you know, urging them to apply where appropriate and making sure they walk them through the application process. And there have been, you know, a few new loan funds that have come up, so.
Thank you. Christine, anything to add or?
Yeah, I just wanted to give the city council credit. Not only did you work with the License Commission to waive three months of fees, you did waive fees for a fire permit for the outdoor propane Peter, Peter program that we did. And then you also did not require any fees for the streetery program, and we are actually one of the few cities that did that. We, as Madam Manager said, we also are chasing after every state grant available to us. We are racing against the clock to submit one tomorrow that we hope helps increase foot traffic in the warmer months. We've also partnered and supported a Greater Lowell Chamber to do a marketing application. So, so we're hopeful we'll have exciting announcements soon. We did, we did receive notice that we received a downtown, through the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, a rapid planning grant. We're still waiting to hear the details about the amount of technical assistance that we'll get, but that will help us work directly with businesses to find out what they need to come out stronger in the pandemic.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Next motion response, Lord Overpass. Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this one is my motion. Thank you. I, I want to thank Diane Trad for this very thoughtful response to the confusing traffic pan and the Lord Overpass with the construction. And, you know, it's just a small area, but it's a very heavily trafficked area. You know, all points of the city throughout the day use it. And you listen, you listen very, very carefully to, you know, the concern that brought up the last time. Basically, the, you know, we're in the middle of winter, we've got a few snowstorms and you dealt with the snow plowing, clear the street issues, clearly marked lanes, detour signs. The big issue in that area is really signage and visibility. And you have addressed all of it, and I see in the report that I think part of visibility or part of visual is that there's a light pole in that area that was broken and not fixed by the National Grid. So this report came back a few days ago from last week. Do we have an update whether that light pole has been fixed as of today? Madam Manager or Diane Trad?
I'm not sure if, if Christine Clancy or Craig knows that. I know we have been working to try and get them to address this, but it's been a challenge. So Christine, if you want to address the National Grid issue as to that light pole.
Sure, thank you. I know we've been in communication with National Grid, but to my knowledge, it has not been fixed as of yet. So we'll continue to coordinate with National Grid.
Wonderful, yeah, that's great. I think that will improve the visual and the visibility a lot, especially the evenings at nighttime. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Next motion response, Christian Hill, Reservoir, Councilor Rook, any questions?
Thanks for the report. I did see, you know, it looks like it's about twelve thousand dollars to, to put the cameras in. And, you know, I know certain grants are available at this time, but it doesn't seem like it's that much money that could be, you know, used to, again, to stop whatever is going on up there. You know, I'm happy to see that the investigation to the first two shootings has been completed and someone's in custody and that they're ongoing on the, on the, on the last one. And just to reiterate, you know, the neighborhood is very happy with the police department and the manager's office with the, you know, exit patrols and so forth. You know, the idea brought up for the cameras was to see the cost and then the availability of monies to do so. So thank you.
Offset with this report? Okay. Councilor Conway, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I'd, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules in order to discuss the utilizing the retired police officers for unfilled details. It's, it's my understanding that,
A second there.
It's my understanding that there, they haven't been utilized. And I'm wandering through you to the city manager, should you give just an update on, on what's going on with that? And because I, I, I think that, you know, under these circumstances, we have obviously offices that are out sick. We have, you know, a number of retirees and so forth.
And I just asked a question. I don't want to put anybody on the spot. Is this something we should bring up another time on a motion or?
Well, I was just wondering what the, what the update on, on that is, what's going on if, if there's still, if we're still using retired police officers for unfilled details, basically. That's what I'm looking for.
All right, Madam Manager.
Yeah, I, I would have to ask, we'll, we'll get your report, Councilor. We have to come back to you with the report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Manager, communications? Information?
Thank you. So the first item on the communication or informational report has to do with our challenge of trying to get a traffic engineer on board. As you may, as we've reported previously, we've posted this a couple of times. We have had difficulty getting a traffic engineer with the requisite experience. We're posting it again. But in the meantime, there have been several traffic motions that have kind of stacked up in the wings. And so in working with Diane Trad and Craig and looking at how do we address this, one of the thoughts was to have someone come in on it, put out a request for a response. So it would be a contract basis, so these motions don't continue to stack up while we're trying to locate a traffic engineer. Craig, I don't know if you have anything to add, but it seems like it would make the most sense that we could, you know, in a timely way, address some of these more complex motions that may require traffic study rather than having them just sitting and waiting for the traffic engineer. And also to make sure that when the traffic engineer does come on board, there isn't such a backlog that there'll be difficulty addressing the motions of the council.
All right, I'm going to go to Councilor Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Madam Manager, I don't oppose, I understand the challenge of hiring a traffic engineer, but are we specifically hiring somebody to respond to motions? Because I have to tell you, while I do think the motions are important, hiring a traffic firm to just respond to motions doesn't make much sense financially. They'll be very expensive. If we're hiring somebody to look into the motions and, and provide solutions, okay, but to me, I read the, I did read the memorandum on this and I'm not, maybe I'm confused, maybe, you know, maybe the intent to hire somebody to answer the motions will initiate a process to address certain intersections and I, I don't know. But is the salary an issue because we're not getting anyone and, or MBTA is offering? And I know this is a field that's limited. There's a lot of folks that go to school to be traffic engineers with the requirement, so. Is, we looked at increasing the salary or putting them on a different salary. This, this has become, and I will say, a very important, certainly with all the closures and construction being done, it's become a very important position. So if it's to address issues in the city, okay, but just to answer motions, that, that I don't think that.
Sure, Madam Manager.
I can admit, Craig Thomas, who's worked on this, it wouldn't be answering every single motion. There are some that we can handle in-house, but there are more complex ones that, you know, are not being addressed. And, and, you know, the concern is that these are motions that the council has. These are motions that the council want to address. So rather than have them just languish and not be responded to. We don't know what.
I'm sorry.
There's a list. Craig, did you attach the list of the motions?
Yes, Manager Donahue, it's on the, on the first page of the draft request for responses. If I may clarify the point, these motions in particular get to some of the larger conversations we've had. It's not just the motion, but how do we respond to citizens? How do we think about a larger intersection that has signals and sidewalks? These are either neighborhood projects, citywide conversations that impact initiatives and motions, or projects that have been in process that are neighborhood conversation that, that need to be completed. You know, there's a lot of good that could come out of this planning process beyond the motion responses itself.
I, I think also Councilor Elliot, to your point, which is well-taken. You know, if it's, if it's, the costs are prohibitive, then we wouldn't pursue it. I mean, this is to just really get an idea what costs might be. And maybe it's just not something that we do pursue. But right now, where we haven't had much luck getting someone on board we thought would explore, you know, this as, is this a viable option? Now, it may not be, but it's just, you know, just trying to explore.
Okay, well, you're looking at five thousand dollars just for, for additional motions. So I, I do see the list, left-hand turns on, you know, Plain Street, et cetera. I'm not saying they're not very important, so I'm a, I'm a little bit torn between hiring consultants to respond to motions. There's not going to be any action, but I, I understand your point. And as, as the position being posted, I mean, again, but what, what is the difference where all the engineers are going to the MBTA?
Yeah. I, I don't, I, the MBTA is doing the mass hiring. They'll figure. I mean.
Right. Okay, thank you for the response.
Sure. Councilor Mercia? You're on mute again. All right.
I completely agree with Councilor Elliot. I felt the same way when I read the report that we were going to hire someone in the interim just to respond to the motions that concern traffic. And I said, it's a lot of money for just that. And I'm saying, we have an assistant transportation engineer. I know that in the auditor's office, when we had not this, not Tina, but the auditor before, and many other times, the second-in-command Karen O'Byrne, she took over. She didn't want the job permanently, but she did take over in the interim. Why do we have an assistant transportation engineer? Couldn't he answer those motions? I don't understand. Maybe he can't, but I'm not supporting something to hire someone just to answer a bunch of questions and motions. No, that's my feeling completely.
The assistant does answer in, in response to those that he's able to, but there are some that are beyond his experience to do.
Well, do we have engineers up in the, upstairs in the third floor? They couldn't answer it either? third floor? Uh, they couldn't answer it either?
The the traffic motions?
Joe Katie, what about that department?
Well, I think they're, I think they have quite a lot to do. We can, we can let the motions wait. I mean, that's just, that's that's why we put this proposal on rather than uh just go out and seek it. We wanted to, you know, test the appetite of the council. Council wants us to explore this. We'll explore it. Otherwise, we'll continue to try and hire a traffic engineer.
Well, I think we should hire a traffic engineer and that way they're, you know, if he's capable or she's qualified, hire that person and and then give him these uh motions, but
And that's exactly what we've been trying to do for months, and that's the problem. But we'll keep, we keep trying. We will keep trying. It's not an easy position to fill, unfortunately.
Is is it a case of the money that they able to make more somewhere else?
I think it's twofold. I think it's it's it it's money and it's also career advancement opportunity in some places where they feel they can move up and and advance their careers.
Thank you.
And there are not that many of them, so, but we will, as I said, we will, you know, uh, go back out.
Yep.
This will be our third, this is our third time advertising, Craig.
Yes, Manager Donahue, if I can just clarify a few points. We're on our third advertising uh process. It's now open and rolling. So if you know anyone, please send them our way. Um, but we unfortunately had two unsuccessful rounds in the fall where we did not get any candidates that met the minimum criteria. Mystic, report that we have two initial screening interviews tomorrow for folks to meet the minimum criteria. We're starting to move forward and uh perhaps it's not clearly worded, but but one piece of clarification on this. A few of the motions that are outstanding are particularly complicated, especially motions that involve string arrows and turning motions through large intersections. So to answer those, we would likely need some amount of consultant support anyway. And so this helps move that forward. But again, the the points of the council are thoughtful and well taken. Um, but that piece about again, this level of study, always needing some kind of, likely needing some kind of support, I think is a is a part of the thought process of putting this together.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Well, I just wanted to know what we're posting salary as. What what do we do the first time? What do we do the second time? What changed between the two posting? Or we can't, you can't, I I'm sure they've changed to some degree, but you post the same information twice with with no changes, won't change. What what was, can I ask salary?
Does anybody know salary, Madam?
Do you have the posting?
Yeah, I can, I can pull the posting up, but I can tell you in broad strokes, it's um in the higher 90,000, slightly below 100,000, um, which is not, from what we understand, not exactly on par with the MBTA is offering during this hiring period, but not hugely far behind it. Um, we did between the first and second, posting changed the experience requirement slightly in the hope that we could have additional candidates meet the minimum criteria, which is not successful, um, which is why we chose to wait a big period over the holidays and repost immediately in 2021, which has already led to modest.
Thank you.
Like, uh, specific sites that we're going to? I I mean, obviously, I'm I'm not questioning the posting, but are there other places that we can go or, well, you've answered my question. I understand it's not easy, so you know, money does, you know, m- m- money is usually one of the driving factors if they have to commute from a certain location and so thank you for the response.
Thank you. Um George, Counselor Rock?
Uh, quickly, I I agree with a lot that that's been said, but you know, the last thing we should do is follow the financial um, you know, um, ways of the MBTA. I mean, you know, they they waste more money and flush more money down the toilet than any other agency in the state. So, um, you know, to lose someone to theirs, you know, what are you gonna do? But hopefully we can find somebody in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Manager, uh, Counsel Chamber upgrades?
Thank you. Um, this is a communication. Um, I think Connor Baldwin and Moran worked on this. Um, a- a- as the informational update um advises, you know, the COVID-19 uh pandemic has um has changed a a number of things of how we've been doing business. Um, and it also afforded us an opportunity to utilize some of the CARES Act money to make much-needed upgrades so that we can have uh adequate communication. Um, in order to do that, uh, and I believe there may have been a missing piece in the packet. Moran, is Moran, there's Moran. Um, uh, the uh city has has contracted with a third party who will make the improvements um for communication, including equipment, uh, cameras, the mayor's reception room. These are all things that are necessary for the city to communicate with the public and the public to communicate with the city. Um, but this will take um approximately three weeks. Is that correct, Moran?
Yes, ma'am.
And they are uh able to start this um the week of two, uh, the 10th of February. Uh, tomorrow?
One.
Okay, so the week of this week. So it's in- informational.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, while we have Superintendent Richardson, I just didn't want to wait till the announcement and it's informational report anyway. Um, Chief, I won't do it any justice. I was hoping maybe you could just um report about, report out on the um, on the certification that the local police department just got, which a lot of people work very hard on and uh, it's a great thing for yourself and the city.
Oh, yeah, we're very fortunate. Um, like you said, and uh the manager said a lot of people um have put some time in here. Uh, Deputy LaRocque, uh, John Noon uh carried most of the water on this, and uh it was a commitment that we made when we first took over here that um I had the discussion with the manager when I interviewed for this job that, you know, we have some, do some great police work in the city, but we always seem to stumble a little bit is on policies and training. Uh, so we knew that if we got ourselves accredited, that would hold us our feet to the fire internally, uh, to make sure all those things are up to date um as we move forward even after I'm gone. So, uh, they really deserve the credit here. Um, they they did the work. We've already started to work on the accreditation and actually assigned a second officer to it today, who happens to be an accreditation inspector. It works part-time for the accreditation bureau. So, um, we have a meeting coming up to determine what I can do, is the superintendent and the administration can do to help this move along faster. Uh, so we're hoping to do that uh by the end of this week. And like I said, we're just gonna keep moving here and try to get to accreditation as fast as we can.
Well, thank you. It speaks volumes and thank you for everything that you've done and the whole team and um the whole low uh local police department. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Good work. Uh, need a motion to accept uh and place on file um the responses. Counselor Rock, seconded by Counselor Samaras.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Madam. Um, Counselor Mercia?
Could we bundle five, three, five point four and five point five, please?
Sure. Uh, communications, uh, five, three, five, four, five, five. Uh uh, communication to appoint Michael DeRosa to Disability Commission. Uh, communication to reappoint Richard Lockhart to the Stark Board uh as Planning Board Member. And communication to uh for Joey and Keegan to request leave of absence. Uh, leave of absence. Um, so we need a roll call on the first two. Motion to adopt by Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Chow. Roll call. Uh, Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
I hear you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
There wasn't a, there wasn't anybody registered to speak like Michael DeRosa, so we're not sliding anybody, are we, by doing that?
No, no registered speakers tonight.
Okay, if I might ask if we could bundle six, one to six, four, these are votes?
Yes. Motion to bundle by Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Samaras.
Oh, I'd like to talk on on six, one, though.
Uh, six, one. Okay. Um, motion to bundle by anybody else second? Counselor Elliott, uh, Counselor Samaras on six, one.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, th- this motion is to accept the work of Miko Kaufman uh in the name of Terry O'Connor. But what I want to make sure is people should uh know that Terry O'Connor has worked tirelessly in in bringing the arts of the city of Lowell, working very hard to ensure that the Whistler House is open to the public, display the works of local artists, and to educate our children. So with this acceptance, and we sent a letter to Ms. Terry O'Connor that we have accepted these statues in her name and thank her for her work at the Whistler House that ensures that our children, our citizens, will have the opportunity to enjoy with local artists, the work of local artists, and also have the opportunity to see their work. She's worked very hard in this area, and to receive these new statues in her name, I think it's quite an honor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to just briefly um give the background to this. Um, Elsie Howell, who is uh re- working as the representative of the estate of Miko Kaufman, has proposed this. Um, as the council knows, the sculpture of the Indian maiden, uh, the city had previously accepted the donation of the sculpture itself. Um, and it's uh currently awaiting approval of DCR because of the sighting uh that the city is proposing is at 300 Pawtucket Boulevard within the Heritage State Park. Um, once the uh DCR has approved that sighting, then it is expected that there may be some fundraising to to actually uh cite the large sculpture from uh the renowned Miko Kaufman. Uh, Terry O'Connor, according to Elsie Howell, um, was the guiding light in determining the placing of the Indian maiden here in the city of Lowell. So, um, these two uh uh sculptures of of smaller of the of the major one, um, we will make certain are placed in a place of prominence in the
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Um, Madam, uh, Counselor Mercia first, then Counselor Conway. Counselor Mercia?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I didn't bundle all these um motions to slide anybody because of of all people, Terry O'Connor is unbelievable, uh dedicated to the city of Lowell, um, loves the city very well and deserves this honor immensely. So, I'm glad that everybody that talked did us did comment on it because she truly is deserving of it. Thank you.
Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Just very, uh, very quickly, um, you know, I I I want to thank Terry O'Connor and her husband, Jack, for uh being uh patrons of the arts in the city for a number of years. When I was on the school committee, uh, Jack O'Connor asked me to uh uh to meet with them. And I know we sat down, we had breakfast, and we talked about how to get art into the schools. And uh so the kids can uh appreciate uh art and uh uh and learn about it so that in the future uh when they became adults, again, they would be uh patrons of the art, just like a a Terry O'Connor and a Jack O'Connor. So again, I think that this is a a wonderful tribute and I, and it's a great idea that uh we send a thank you. Uh, thank you to uh Terry O'Connor for all the hard work that she has uh she's put forward in the city uh to uh advance uh advance art. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so votes, uh, six, one through six, four. Uh, permission to waive the full reading, second reading by silent motion. Six, one, vote to accept gift of two small Indian maiden sculptures in honor honor of Terry O'Connor. Vote to accept and expend state 911 uh grant emergency medical dispatch. Vote to accept and expend sub grant from UML for $5,000. And vote license agreement, Merrimack Street, fifty uh five, fifty-five, overhang, bay window in cornice. Um, roll call? Oh, yeah, motion by Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Chow. Roll call. Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, report Subcommittee, uh, Finance Subcommittee, February ninth. Counselor Elliott?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief. The Finance Subcommittee met uh this evening at 5:30. In attendance were members of the Subcommittee, Counselor Conway, Counselor Noon, um, as well as uh every city councillor, um, Counselor Mercier, uh, Counselor Rock, Counselor Samaras, Counselor Chow. Um, I don't want to miss anybody. Um um, I think I think I named everybody. Counselor Drinkwater. Uh, so, um the Chief Financial Officer, Connor Baldwin, presented um a PowerPoint presentation relative to the city finances. This motion was referred um a couple of weeks ago. Um, a couple of items, uh, just to recap the the presentation. Uh, the fund balance of the city uh shows a relative strength and uh good financial uh management in our system. Uh, we talked about our stabilization funds, our rainy day funds still remains at 10.9 million, if you recall. Uh, but last year's budget, we, in order to hold the line on taxes, we did use one point uh, excuse me, 1.5 million uh out of the rainy day fund to um to put towards the revenue stream in the city. Uh, we have not re- received our certified free cash this year, um, as of yet. Um, we're still working on it. Um, but expectations are that if there is a surplus, then we will replenish that rainy day fund. Um, as as well, with with some of the funds, anyway. Um, there's a, there were a couple of motions that came out of the uh of the Subcommittee. One was relative to the Health Trust Funds. Uh, currently, their Health Benefit Trust, excuse me, is currently $3.1 million in that benefits trust, uh, which is managed by the PEC, the Public Employee Contribution. Um, contributions, the unions. Um, so the motion was to get a report from the PEC on potential use of the funds. The funds have then been deposited by employees um to offset any um any excesses of claims when the city switched from Blue Cross Blue Shield to GIC. Uh, so that motion, that is a motion that we'll bring forward, that we get a report from the PEC on any plans that they may have um to use that funding, which is very specific and for those employees. Um, so the second motion uh was relative um to the, well, no, actually, there wasn't another motion relative to the Community Preservation Act. We did receive a report report tonight that uh there is a um the first meeting of the CPC, um, which the 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 first meeting will be to elect uh officers um and then proceed with other business. Uh, we talked about debt and um where we are with debt. We talked about revenues. Um again, the city, uh, the the city is three quarters of last year. Revenues were 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 solid. However, the fourth quarter, we did see a reduction as a result of COVID. That trend continues into the first two quarters of this year. Uh, however, we have budgeted uh on a conservative uh basis to ensure that the revenues uh will support our expenditures. Fiscal controls still maintain, are still in place by the administration. Uh, we did, we talked about the CARES Act uh funding of $9 million and where that money was spent. There's also a report in the packet tonight. Um um, lastly, there'll be a uh report coming forward from a grant that we received from the Collins Center regarding a forecasting model um that the CFO and the deputy CFO are implementing to come up with recommendations on how we can uh do additional forecasting. Um, and then lastly, the audit to give a report, um, the general fund is Um, and then lastly, the audit to give a report, um, the general fund is essentially complete and there's audit, uh, with the audit, there's been no findings at this point. Uh, they're still conducting single audits in some of the larger grant funds, um, in the city, but all indications, uh, at this point is that things are very positive. That management letter will be forthcoming sometime soon. That's a report of the Finance Subcommittee, and I kind of went through, um, a number of items, but, uh, the city is in sound fiscal shape. We're, we're still maintaining good, strong fiscal controls in light of, um, in, in light of some of the uncertainty. Fingers crossed that the stimulus bill will, uh, provide relief, some relief to, uh, the state and certainly that money will trickle down to municipality. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a report of the Finance Subcommittee. Uh, and lastly, there will be a, um, we're going to schedule a joint Subcommittee with the School Finance Subcommittee to talk about the S of Funds. Um, S of Funds, not the first one, but S or two, that, uh, has been provided in the second stimulus funding, um, upwards of seventeen million dollars. So.
Thank you. Need a motion to accept the report of progress and adopt the motions by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Noon. All those in favor? We'd be welcome. Uh, petitions, eight one, claim, uh, property damage. Need a motion to refer a law department for a report and recommendation by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Rourke. Um, eight two miscellaneous endeavor Allegra, uh, for benefit of Georgia Allegra, request installation of handicap parking sign at one ninety-two Lawrence Street. Need a motion to refer traffic engineer for a report and recommendation by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Conway. Um, eight three, PC Systems Incorporated, AT&amp;T Gilmore Group, request insulation of underground.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I had my, um, thing on. May I comment on the last petition for, for Deborah Agrella?
Sure.
I'm sorry. This is a petition by Deborah Agrella for her brother George Agrella of one ninety-two Lawrence Street, who is asking the city for a handicapped space in front of this place of residence. Usually, a handicapped placard is presented to indicate that the person is handicapped. However, this is a unique case where Deborah, the sister, has no plate indicating such because she does not own a car. This handicapped parking space is needed because a handicapped van comes very, very often to pick up her brother, and there is never a parking space close enough to retrieve him. This space would at least give the van a chance to pick up the man in front of the, his house. He has a very difficult time to get to the van the further away that the van is parked. I'm asking that this minor technicality of not presenting a handicap placard does not stand in the way or hinder the end result to happen for this most deserving individual. His doctor's letter for approval is included, indicating his severe disability. So I just wanted to add that to the report, uh, to the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mercy. Um, eight three, PC Systems Incorporated, AT&amp;T Gilmore Group, request insulation of underground for a small cell antenna on hole number five on Avenue Street. Need a motion to refer to public hearing, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at seven PM by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Samaras. City Council motions. First Council, first motion tonight by Counselor Noon. Request City Manager work with the Election Department to provide informational report for candidates and voters regarding upcoming election, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, there's a number of listening session that the expert hosts, um, for resident. And not only that, but also a lot of, uh, question to come from resident and candidate as well about, um, what's, what's going to happen with our current ward increasing. Uh, they don't know that for sure, uh, what's will happen. Uh, so the other question is like, say, um, so it's going to be a primary election for district as well as for at large? Um, the other question is about, um, so, uh, if I live in district, say, in the Lower Island District, the nomination paper, uh, do I need, uh, signature? Can I go out of the, the district to get signatures? Um, so those are some of the questions that, that have not been answered. Um, and, and we, we, we need to really, uh, you know, have this informational, um, provided to residents so they know, um, you know, um, they have some answer at least. Um, so I think the Commissioners, uh, Election Commissioner and the, the Election Department are probably working on those and start talking about it, uh, so that we won't be, uh, you know, closer to the election and, and, and have them people not still wondering not knowing the answers. And that's why I put it out there. They probably, the Election Office and all the Commissioner probably working on this already. Uh, I just want to make sure that we're working on it and we don't wait for it last minute.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, um, i- if there's, uh, no objection from the maker of the motion, I, I was wondering if, uh, this, um, report could also provide some information about the process of reprecincting? Um, I, I believe it, it generally happens, um, in, in coordination with the, with the census every ten years. Um, generally, I, I'm sure there's probably not a whole lot of change in terms of precinct boundaries, but given that we're at the same time going through, uh, the process of drawing election districts and some of those districts, I believe presently, uh, cross precinct lines. Um, I don't know if there's, you know, any, any opportunity to, you know, try to, uh, fix some of those, those boundaries. And I believe, um, Doctor personally in talking about, you know, any potential further changes, um, to the election district map, mentioned trying to avoid, uh, crossing precinct lines with the election district. So, um, I know personally, I'm not all that familiar with, um, the, the process of reprecincting, uh, at the city level, but I think it might be helpful, um, just in, in producing, producing this report to include, uh, a little bit of information on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? Counselor Noon, you're all set? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Uh, second motion tonight, Counselor Noon. Request City Manager work with Property Department to host informational neighborhood sessions or otherwise educate voters on how the new voting system will work, where to vote, and et cetera. Seconded by Counselor Samaras, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, same thing, um, you know, voter need to know, um, how to vote, um, you know, particularly for the, the district, um, you know, candidate. Um, if you have more than a couple, um, you can only vote for one or maybe two if there's a primary, if there's primary election. So I'm not sure how it's all going to work out. I think the Election Department and all Commissioner will have the answers, uh, because, you know, if we have primary election, then, you know, they can choose up to however many for district as well as up to however many for at large. So we don't know the answers to it. I don't know the answers. So I, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there so that maybe the Election Department and all Commissioner, uh, would know the answers to it and including where the people can go vote, uh, for their district. And that's all I'm, I'm asking that we will be looking in to this, um.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? All those in favor, say aye. Uh, next motion tonight, Counselor Noon, Counselor Chow. Request City Manager direct the DPD to create a plan, a timeline, update comprehensive master plan, and to use the planning process to develop a citywide zoning adjustments to allow for more affordable housing. Counselor Noon?
It's like, may, Mr., uh, Leahy, there was a registered speaker, but I, I haven't noticed that. He's checked in or anything, so move on.
Okay, Counselor Noon then, Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, as you know, that every three year, we look at, uh, master plans, and it has been a number of years now that we need to look at master plan. But while we doing that, I thought that we may be using the planning process, uh, to, um, develop a citywide. Same thing, the zoning, uh, zoning chain, the big zoning chain was happening in two thousand and six. Uh, so, um, you know, uh, you know, if we can, if we look at, to update master plan, maybe also looking at, you know, the zoning amendment, if need be, uh, that will allow us to look at how we do, uh, affordable housing and housing in the city. Um, I think the planning, uh, the, uh, DPD, the planning, uh, development, uh, they know exactly what you do and, and, and so, uh, they probably already start this process already. You're saying that, you know, it's been a number of years now that we look into it and, and to, to again, you know, we talk about it a lot about, you know, uh, housing issues and affordable housing in the city. Not just our city, it happened in other cities as well, but the focus here in the city of Lowell and to, to, to make any change and to make, to add any more housing stock to affordable housing to the city. We, we need to turn to zoning, and zoning hasn't been updated, uh, uh, for a number of years. So, um, this is an opportunity to do both.
Thank you, Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Noon mentioned, uh, most of the concerns that I have with the master plan already. I just want to add that, you know, uh, Lowell is a very big city, and with the past ten years, there has been a population increase in, in, in Lowell, uh, more, uh, particularly there's increased pressure on, on the lack of, of supply. So this would be a good time to, uh, include the, uh, plan to have more supply, to have more affordable housing, uh, for the city. Um, so that way, we don't really wait till, um, we have, uh, maybe more problems with housing for low-income families. Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I think this is a really great motion, uh, and very much support, uh, engaging in this process. And, um, want to point out, we actually had a, a great, um, Subcommittee meeting that occurred at, at some point over the summer, and I know, um, that Eric Slagle had responded to a motion request that I, I believe was from, uh, Counselors Noon and, and Counselor Rourke. Um, it related to potential, um, zoning changes to, to increase the supply of housing. There are a number of great, um, suggestions and ideas that were laid out, uh, by Mr. Slagle, uh, at, at that meeting, which I think can, you know, provide a good, uh, starting point. So, uh, I think there's a great motion, uh, to keep that momentum going and, and look at what we can do to, uh, you know, increase both supply and, and the supply of affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Next motion tonight, Counselor Drinkwater. Request City Manager and the appropriate departments explore partnerships with organizations serving medically vulnerable and unserviced populations to conduct outreach and coordinate access to the COVID nineteen vaccine. Partnering organizations may include, but not limited to, Lowell Housing Authority, Elder Services Program, community organizations, and religious congregation. Seconded by Counselor Chow. Counselor, uh, Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, um, I, I think this was actually touched on, uh, earlier in the night in, uh, in terms of the discussion, uh, on the vaccination program. Um, and I know that the focus right now, um, is on making sure that the, uh, rollout, um, of the vaccine and the vaccine locations happen smoothly, and, and those that are seeking access to the vaccine right now can get it. Um, and, uh, as that gets up and running, you know, e- even if we do as, as good a job as we possibly can, uh, in terms of making, you know, an accessible system, uh, for those who are trying to use it, we know that there are going to be, um, multitudes of people here in the, the city, um, who don't end up getting the vaccine for, uh, a multitude of different reasons. And, um, I know early, during the night, you know, um, that the City Manager mentioned, um, that there, you know, phone calls happening to, to seniors, um, that offers of, you know, transportation to get them to, to vaccine sites. And, um, it was mentioned the potential of, of mobile visits to, uh, seniors who, who might be, uh, immobile, uh, themselves. So, um, it, you know, I think those are exactly the sort of things that I'm hoping these partnerships, um, can, can encourage. Um, I know in terms of mobile visits, I saw there's a couple of cities right now, uh, I believe Chelsea and Quincy that are, um, working with, uh, uh, ambulance companies as well as, uh, first responders and, and the firefighters to actually do mobile visits, uh, to, to senior citizens and go out, uh, get, um, paramedics and EMTs trained and, and actually being able to, uh, to give vaccinations and get them out, you know, visiting people at their homes. So, um, these are all the, the types of things that I, I think will, you know, hopefully get us to that, that point of, of herd immunity and, and make sure we're, we're getting to people where they're at. Um, the, the other reality here is that there are, uh, you know, minority populations that are currently, uh, getting vaccinated at, at lower levels than, than, uh, what they represented the, the, it, within the population. Um, I read statistics that currently, um, statewide, um, the, uh, the black, black population, um, represents three percent of those who have been vaccinated so far, um, while the nine percent of the overall population and the, uh, the Latino population represents four percent of those who are vaccinated so far when they represent twelve percent of the overall population. So it's a diversity, uh, we're going to be, um, you know, struggling with these issues and, and making sure everyone has, um, proper education about the vaccine, proper access. Um, and our community organizations, I think, can be helpful in just, you know, getting to those people where they are, getting the education out. Um, so I know this stuff is, is already happening, you know, not surprisingly, the, these, uh, partnerships are already coming together and, and, um, you know, the, the Health Department and the Managers' Office are working on it. But, uh, just wanted to put this in to hopefully continue to keep the Council, uh, apprised of that and, and encourage those sorts of partnerships as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by Counselor Conway. Request City Manager meet with LTC and appropriate medical organizations to develop a video that gives a step-by-step tutorial on how to navigate through the COVID nineteen state website to secure an appointment to receive the COVID nineteen vaccine on LTC. City Lowell website and other local out, seconded by Counselor Noon. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think actually we can take nine five, nine six together, uh, if there's no objection by the Council.
Six, um, Counselor Conway, request City Manager explore feasibility of creating a partnership with MCC, UML, Lowell Public Schools to have students assist Lowell residents who have difficulty navigating COVID nineteen state website in order to secure appointments to receive the vaccine. This assistance would help seniors, uh, non-English speaking citizens, and other challenged population. Seconded again by Counselor Noon. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's one thing that certainly stands out tonight, uh, with the, um, with the City Council, uh, and the City Manager and her team, is the fact that we are zeroing in on, uh, COVID and trying to solve some of the problems that, uh, that surrounds it. Uh, I have, which I'm sure that everyone sitting here tonight, uh, have, uh, received telephone calls or talked to individuals that are having a very difficult time navigating through the, uh, through the, uh, state, uh, website. And you say that to some people and they say, I, 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 I don't understand. Why would they be a problem? Well, if you're not dealing with technology on a daily basis like some people are, I can certainly understand where there is, uh, there is a challenge. Now, I know that in many, uh, no matter what aspect of life, uh, we, you can find, uh, videos, uh, and the, the videos on how to, uh, uh, and, and very easily, easily find them. Uh, how to fix, uh, change your oil, how to do this, how to do that. The bottom line here is, uh, it might be something that we could explore. And I know the City Manager has talked about doing so many different things here, uh, to try to get, uh, everyone to the table to get vaccinated. But this might be something to take a look at. They have a video on, uh, LTC and perhaps on the website to help navigate through, uh, the process. And also, uh, we've talked about partners and, uh, uh, Counselor Drinkwater just mentioned a minute ago about partnerships, and we have great partnerships, and, uh, we have great educational institutions. And I think that some of these, uh, you know, going into the, uh, my motion on nine six, uh, and we've talked about it tonight, about the seniors and the non-English speaking citizens and other, should we say, tech-challenged population. Uh, I'm wondering whether, and, and this would be more of a long-term, um, long-term solution. is perhaps see if we can partner up with, with those educational institutions that might certainly have the expertise and the understanding and the knowledge to, to help these, these different groups. I think that sadly, it's not, this is something that's not going to go away very quickly. It's going to be around for a while. So whatever we can do, and certainly the city manager and, and as I said, her team and the city council have zeroed in on this. And I'm sure we will continue to zero in on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Nine, eight. Counselor Elliott. Counselor Mercy, request city manager have law department prepare vote to place ballot question to allow residents to vote for the mayor. Counselor Elliott?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if Counselor Mercy, if she wants to go first?
It doesn't matter, but I think that I'd like to amend this motion and have it read. Request city manager have law department prepare vote to place binding ballot question. I don't, you know, you could have a ballot question, but if people support it immensely and it's overwhelming that they want it and it's not a binding question, then it goes nowhere. It's like, it's like putting forward nothing. So if you don't mind.
I second that, that makes sense.
All right. So if we could do that. So I would comment this way and say, to me, it is so strange and unexplainable how 13, I believe that it's now 11 people now, sued the city for the purpose of including everyone and allowing all residents, especially minorities, to be included in a fair process to run for elected office. But when it comes to choosing the mayor, these same people, namely the two who were in the paper today, one is a city council candidate and the other from Congresswoman Laurie Trahan's office, who promotes inclusion, wants to exclude the public from taking on their civic obligation to elect a mayor. They want to do that. Not you, not the voter, just them. And tell us they don't want to rush the process? The voting public, the voters should be included. How hard is that decision? Their message is, make it fair for me, include me, but exclude you? And stop you, the voter, the city resident, from voting for mayor? Vote for me, but you may not vote for who you feel should be the mayor. To you, I say, be fair to all, not just to you. It was learned that the plaintiffs are residents who have worked nearly four years to ensure equitable representation at city hall for all Lowell residents. Well, if that is true, why did they not allow all voting residents to choose their mayor? Just you, if elected, be fair all around. How much time do you need to make a fair decision? So much for community input that I thought they were striving for. And that is my comment. And that's why I'm making this motion. Because I firmly believe it is the people, of the people, by the people, for the people. And if they choose whomever they want for mayor, God love them. That's who they choose, not who I choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott? Joe, you're on mute again, Counselor. Counselor Elliott, you're on mute.
Yeah, my fault. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I concur with Counselor Mercier. You know, the notion that this is just coming out of the blue and it's a last-minute effort to disrupt the process couldn't be further from the truth. Just like, if you just do a quick Google on Lowell, son, we had a joint subcommittee on this issue well over a year ago. So it's not something that came out of the blue. In fact, I believe that it was discussed even in executive session during this negotiations. And, you know, I'm not going to engage in these unfounded comments by these individuals in the newspaper. You know, it seems that certain, certain officials just become sport to name-calling. Now, now it's the old guard or dinosaurs and, and the list goes on. You can call us what you want, but I have only had the best interest of the people in this city. And I don't have, never had a hidden agenda. So I, you know, this, this notion actually came out of it. It was Counselor Samaras had said, let's put this on the ballot and let the people speak. I agree. I happen to think that people are going to want to vote for their mayor. But if, you know, certain, you know, if, if people want to put this on the ballot to get an opinion, that's fine. I just happen to feel that it's, it's time when we're going through a new election system that at the same time, people can vote for their mayor. It's just, it, it kind of is, makes logical sense to me. And by the way, you know, this very council, when I hear the attorney for the opponent say, you know, we, we're taking the low road, how, how sad is that? When this very council and the pretty previous city council, we took the high road. We accepted the terms of the, of the lawsuit. We didn't go to trial. We didn't want to do that. We took the high road. We're living up to our end of the bargain because we want fairness, we want equal access, we want to give everybody an equal chance. So I say as a city, we want to let them, let the people speak. And so, you know, it's unfortunate that it's, it's just back and forth. This is about giving people the right to vote, engage more community involvement. And quite frankly, it's disappointing that this, this notion that people should be excluded is kind of intuitive to the whole intent of the lawsuit. To be, to begin with, we want more voter participation, we want more community involvement and stronger democratic principles. And how can you strengthen our system more than to empower people with who they're going to vote to be their city councilor and their mayor? So I, I think it's important that we let the people be heard and that's why we put on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Samaras?
Thank you. No, I understand the, the concerns that have just been raised. But what, I just want to bring up some procedural issues or concerns that I have as to why I couldn't support this at this particular point. As a city council, we agreed to the consent decree issued by the court. And basically what the court issued was that it changed the voting process in the sense that we had vote for three at large and for eight, and for district council in eight districts. And that's being worked on at this particular time. So, but we also did not, but we did not agree at that time to change the form of how we vote for mayor, that we would keep the present practice that we have. I mean, the issue to take it to the public is something that we always want to do. There's no question about that. But in this case, I'd be, I believe it would be futile because I do not believe that this vote could overturn the court, the court order. That's my concern. And we'd be spending city money on an election process that wouldn't really go anywhere. Now, we have an executive session tomorrow to discuss this further. And I don't, I, I think at this point, I think this motion should go to the executive session to discuss it, you know, with the city solicitor as to what, you know, what our rights are and what would really happen. I mean, it's one thing to say this, we want to bring this to the people, but if it's going to be a meaningless, meaningless exercise, I can't do that. You know, so that's my issue at this particular time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other comments on this, the discussion, Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say that I do agree with the, the motion. You know, I, back a couple of years ago, I brought a motion forward to ask for a ballot question on the voting and allowing the voters to decide whether they wanted to change the present voting system in Lowell or keep the present one. I was not allowed to speak on my motion. You know, what, what is the result? It's 12 individuals, 12 residents of Lowell made the decision, in reality, for 62,000 Lowell voters to change our present voting system. So when I take a look at this motion by Counselor Elliott and Mercier, I really see nothing wrong with it. I agree with the motion. It is the most direct and purest form of democracy, letting the people decide through their vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it had come up, but I think probably at the first subcommittee meeting where this came up, there was a bit of discussion about whether the, the proper way to bring this forward would be, you know, via a ballot referendum. At the time, I supported the, the initial votes to move this forward, thinking that, you know, it didn't necessarily necessitate a ballot question for, for the council to take action on it. But, you know, I, I think at this point in time, that would, would represent the way to go. And my concern here, and, and I do share the concern of Counselor Samaras that he raised with procedurally, whether the, the voters through a binding referendum would have the power to, you know, to, to change the consent decree. I would probably favor that, you know, a non-binding question for that procedural reason. And the, the other concern I have is that, you know, we passed a motion a couple of weeks ago to really, to try to deal directly with the court and, and move forward with the change of the way that the mayor is elected, you know, through direct intervention with the courts. I don't think these two approaches can really, you know, coexist harmoniously. And, and I think at this time, you know, taking it to the voters, you know, letting them weigh in and letting, you know, the next council act on the recommendations of the voters, you know, for potential change in 2023 would be a better way to go. But I do believe that if we are going to, you know, ask the voters for, for how they feel on this and what their opinion is, that we should commit to that. And, and, you know, it would be my preference to, you know, even though I voted for the motion two weeks ago, you know, to, to approach the board, that we, we not move forward with, you know, trying to seek a change to the, to the consent decree or to move forward a home rule petition for the, for the 2021 election, that if we're going to do this and, and ask the, the voters for their opinion, you know, that we commit to hearing what they have to say and, and, you know, allowing the, the next council to, to act on those recommendations. So I, I'm not going to propose any, you know, specific motion on, on how we deal with what came up a, a couple of weeks ago. You know, but I, I will, you know, support this motion to, to find out what the public thinks. And, you know, should, should it pass, you know, I, I hope we can deal with, you know, how we're going to, you know, push this forward, going forward and, and not have two, two tracks going simultaneously. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chow and then Counselor Rourke and then Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree in the concept, the idea of having the residents, the public vote for the mayor. But for clarification, I see Madam Solicitor is here and, you know, it's for some of us here in the council and certainly for the public viewing this show tonight. If she could answer, Solicitor could answer, is the election of the mayor part of the decree? Or, or was it not included in this decree?
Joe Christine? I'm sorry. So Madam Solicitor?
It's fine. Thank you. So this motion would be, would be problematic in that it would be contrary to the consent decree, which is what we are bound to follow. It is what, what the city had agreed to. Having discussions with the, with the plaintiffs and exploring what we can do to modify the consent decree is something that, that has been ongoing. And again, we do have an executive session tomorrow evening. And I can give a further update in that forum to the specifics of those discussions. But, but to have a binding referendum would be contrary to the consent decree. And as a result, it would not, it would not be a viable next step for the council.
So if it is contrary to the consent decree, what, what would be the consequence of us taking votes tonight? Is that something that now, once it is passed, now that you have to step your foot in the court to, to dispute it? Or?
No, I mean, we, yes, I do. It's a, it's an important question. And what I would, what I would ask the council is that we do have the session scheduled for tomorrow evening. That is the appropriate forum to entertain some of these discussions. And, but with respect to a binding motion, we cannot engage in action or next steps that are going to be contrary to what we had agreed to in the, in the consent decree with the court. So it would be contrary to the law of the consent decree that is the law of this case.
So?
And accordingly, it is absolutely, you know, not advisable to do.
So maybe along the same line as what Counselor Drinkwater was saying that, you know, I, like, like I want to be clear that I, I support that the public should vote for the mayor. But, and, you know, just to get this motion the way it's written before, without making it a binding, that would be okay because that would get the public sentiment as what they would like to do and therefore would not put us in contradiction to the consent decree. Is that correct? So if we stick to the original motion as it was written, that would be fine. But if you were to make it binding, then it would become a legal dispute with the court?
Not necessarily. Again, the, there are potentially problems raised with a non-binding question as well. And it's for that reason that I think it would be more appropriate if we had some of these discussions in, in executive session.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Who is next? I lost track.
Yeah, just a quick question, Mr. Mayor, for you, for Solicitor. I, I guess overall, how, how long are we held this decree? You know, is it, how long, I guess, is the binding for?
It, it is what we would agree, agreed to moving forward. So in that sense, it's, it's binding until we adopt some other method of, of election.
So we, so we, yeah, so we've done that, right? So we've gone to the eight, three.
Correct.
I mean, so when, you know, when is it, when do we have to, you know, go back and, and, you know, and beg for something? It makes, you know, it seems a little bit that we're always, you know, it was decided on, we're going to do the election. So why, I guess, why is it still open?
I'm not, I'm not sure that I 100% follow. So the city was to, in order to, to step back from this a bit, the city was given some different options of forms of government that would be, that would be acceptable to the, to the plaintiffs. This was the, the form that was chosen by the, by the council. It was input, obviously, the council received from, from voters, which again was to the credit of the council. It was how this council decided to do it. That's not at all typical for, for cases. And so it was something that was recognized by the court as a, as an innovative way and, and a celebrated way to, to do it. That said, that has become, in the same way that our general laws has worked to, to inform the public as to legally what, what form of government we have and legally how individuals are elected, that's where the consent decree now fits in. And if we want to, if the council wants to go in a, years down the road, wants to go in a different direction, whether that's one year down the road or 10 years down the road or longer, then we would have to seek to, to alter that consent decree. then we would have to seek to alter that consent decree. In the same way, really, that we would look to have to take some sort of steps to alter aspects of Plan E as set forth in the Mass General Laws, as well as in our charter. In this case, what... There are now a number of different things that impact how elections are conducted in the city of Lowell. So we have the special legislation that was recently passed. We have the consent decree. We have our charter. And we also have Massachusetts General Laws Plan E. All of those things, you know, still have a role. And if we are going to deviate from those, then we need to do it in a way that's going to be legally acceptable and in a way that, once it's done, the public can rest assured it's going to be legally binding.
So the way that the mayor has chosen previously, that's the way it's written in the decree right now going forward?
Right, that's part of how the election is to take place moving forward.
Alright, thanks.
Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Solicitor. I appreciate that information. But what is... Probably is the intent of this lawsuit at the very outset. Well, it's not about the mayor at all whatsoever. The claim was a voting right.
That's right.
Violation, the way that city councilors are elected.
That's it.
This was raised in executive session.
Yes, it was.
About how we're going to vote for the mayor. And the plaintiffs discounted that. We were talking about how many city councilors, how can we come to an agreement on what the structure is, et cetera, et cetera. And I know you prefer to talk about this tomorrow night, and I'm fine with that. But this is where I feel like the people of the city have no say. And perhaps another reason why people just throw up their arms and don't get involved and go to vote when we see shrinking numbers, because I don't feel like they have a stake in any option, including, we couldn't put this on the ballot to change the form of government. It was just one or the other. So, I mean, it's a little frustrating that the people have little say on the destiny and how the elected officials are, you know, are elected. And that's kind of why I'm at the point where we are. We're going to let the court decide the fate on how people get elected in the city. And it's really unfortunate. I, you know, they said they wanted to get the input from the people. So I thought we'd put this motion on to say, okay, they'd be in the plaintiffs? Okay, let's get the input of the people, so.
If you're Counsel Mercy, then Counsel New.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just flabbergasted by the whole thing. I'm going to take you back to executive session, and I'm going to talk about what went on there. I'm going to talk about it because the minutes of the meeting were already released, so I could say what I'm about to say. And I specifically remember asking the solicitor, is there anything, any direction for how we choose the mayor? And Madam Solicitor, you said no. No, there is nothing indicating that. And now, all of a sudden, we have to go by something that you changed the direction of it? I don't buy it. I do not buy it. Now, what we went to the polls for was there were four options, and we let the people decide because the plaintiffs wanted a different setup for voting. There were four options. The majority of people chose eight-three, eight districts, three at large. It showed me on the voting where it said, and the mayor will be selected by the next city council that gets sworn in. I don't recall ever, ever going to the polls and voting for that. You're trying, not you personally, everybody's trying to fool the public. It's just an outrage. It's an outrage. And I'm just very disappointed and disgusted to the point where I know we're going into executive session, but I want the people to see who supports you and who don't. I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, roll call.
Okay, I'm going to have Counsel New go first, and then back to the solicitor. Counsel New's been waiting. Counsel New.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent decree is very detailed and that's after almost two years of work done by chief lawyers, the city solicitor, and her staff, as well as the plaintiff. Any change in that, it has to, we have to amend that consent decree. I know that we have direct, the city solicitor to go to the plaintiff, plaintiff attorney, to try and to address some of those changes that we spoke of, one of which is how the mayor elected. And it has also changed, go back to the home rule petition to change it. You know, listen, I too would like resident and voter to select the mayor. But we heard it, we heard it from our chief lawyer, the city solicitor tonight, who described this motion as problematic. I know Counsel Samaras talked about procedural concern. I was going to say that it's procedural concerns as well, but I heard tonight that is problematic. And plus, we have an executive session to talk about this tomorrow. I'm sure at that executive session, the city solicitor is going to give us more information that she probably couldn't say it right now. So, you know, I understand everyone talking about... I too feel the same way that resident and voter should have the right to elect mayor, but we are tied with the consent decree that we agreed to and that all of us, before we agreed to with the plaintiff, all of us got to see it. All of us read it. Oh, I read it. I don't know who didn't, but I read it. And it's spelled out there. And then we signed it, we agreed. This is not something that, you know, throw off to us and that saying, hey, I didn't know anything about this and that. This is stuff that we read and we seen it before we consent to it with, you know, with, you know, having a city solicitor to go back to the plaintiff and said, okay, we okay with it? Let's proceed. And now we back here. I said in the last council meeting too about that, you know, when the city solicitor come back before us with respond to some of the motions, some of the requests we have with regard to not only how we elect mayor, but also the change to have the school committee being all district. I read the motion respond from the city solicitor and the communication that, because I didn't go communicate with the plaintiff, but the city solicitor did. It seemed very promising, sounds like what they're saying to the city solicitor that we are not opposed to it wholly. But let's come and let's talk about it. They probably want, they probably what they're trying to say is that maybe, no, this matter should be taken up by the next council. I think too, it would be the right things to do because the next council, you're going to have the eight districts and the three at large. And those, those, the council are going to really engage in this change. And I think this change will happen, but the way we go about it, I think is not the right way. So, and that's why I can't vote for it tonight.
I think this should go on all night. I'll refer to Counsel Elliot and Counsel Mercy. Do we want to take this up tomorrow night in the executive session then?
I want a roll call vote, Mr. Mayor. I want the people to see who supports him and who don't. Because I think this city should be run by the people, not eleven people. And I think the mayor, which we never, ever discussed it or voted for it in a polling booth, we talked about it in the executive session, and we're told there was nothing that indicated how to support, how to vote for a mayor. That's why we discussed it. Now, all of a sudden, they want the next council to support it or vote for whatever they want? No, I want a roll call vote, and then we'll discuss it tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor? Just have a quick comment possible? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to, Counsel Elliot, any other comment on your motion? No? Okay. Counsel Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I may, it seems that the majority of the councilors would be in favor of the people voting for the mayor. And it also seems to me that the majority of the residents would support the people voting for the mayor. And I hear the, you know, the reasoning, the logic from both the members of the motion, and I support that. But given the situation that the vote tonight might be in contrast to the consent decree or even force us to go back to court, if the makers of the motion would compromise, I would suggest making a motion because I do want to publicly hear what's going on, even though we're going to discuss this tomorrow in executive session. If the makers of the motion tonight would agrees, I put a motion to have the solicitor approach the plaintiff again and come back with an answer from the plaintiff that they make a decision whether they're going to accept, you know, the motion for us to have the people elect the mayor. Because the response from the solicitor the last time, it seems like they are not opposing it. They just need more time. And I don't think it takes like a whole year to come up with, you know, what the people really want. This being February, I think they can, they would have enough time to bring it to the public and come back, you know, whether they're gonna... I don't want to use this word, but whether they're going to allow, you know, the motion to pass and to have the people elect the mayor or not, have them come back with an answer by May or June. And that would be my suggested compromise motion is to come back, you know, for the plaintiff to come back with an answer by May or June, a definite answer, whether the public, you know, it can be passed or not. Thank you.
Solicitor.
Thank you. The... So with respect to the mayor's position, it was not a part of the litigation in the sense that what they were looking to do was change how the council was elected. However, the mayor is obviously an inexorable part of the council. And so even though the focus of the plaintiffs was on the bigger picture, i.e. how a council was elected, you cannot separate, once a new system is set up, you cannot separate the mayor from it. So within that, when there was a new system set up, the agreement was that for the election of the mayor, it would remain with the council. And hence, it is part of the consent decree, which is why, in order to change it, we need to go back to court. Anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Rock.
One last question. Take the mayor subject out of it. Does the council have the ability to put a binding question on a ballot, just in general, Madam Solicitor?
Yes.
In general, yes. But you can't have a binding, you can't take action that's going to be contrary to a consent decree.
Okay, yeah. Again, I think...
There are rules and regulations with respect to what can be a binding question and what can be a non-binding question. So it's, my only hesitation is it's not really just necessarily a clear-cut answer, sort of a one-answer, one-size-fits-all, but...
Okay, yeah, again, I would just request that we, I would vote for the motion if we had to do it tonight. But I would request that we just go to the executive session tomorrow. The question can only be brought back next meeting. You know, it's just that, I think the reason why Solicitor and the manager want us to meet in executive session, so I think we should probably hear it up first. Thank you.
Counsel Mercy.
Yes, here's the situation. I know that there's a stickler with the word binding. But I want the people to decide. And if I have to give them a chance to do that, I'll take the word binding out just so that we can see. And the next group of councilors that think they're probably going to be better than the ones that we have here today can decide that they get something to work with, namely that the public will support voting for the mayor. So I will revert back to the very way the motion is sitting without the word binding. And now I'm going to ask for a roll call because this is a democracy. This isn't about you. It isn't about me or nine people. It's about the people that put us in these chairs, and somebody has to fight for them. And that's what I'm doing. So roll call.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Everybody's had several chances. I haven't had any. Come on. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I have a right to speak. Have you denied me?
No, he's not.
Counsel Samaras, then roll call.
Thank you. Look, the one thing is personally, I've always believed that the public, the people, have the right. There's no question, okay, that they have. But the vote tonight, the concern I have is legitimate. It's about procedure. It's how we do things. And then Counsel Roach has brought in. The issue is, all I'm asking for is to bring this to the executive session and just vet everything out at this particular point. But if we're not going to do that, I would have to vote against this because it's not voting against the people. It's not taking the right away from people to give their input. We always want people to have input. But we also have a responsibility. And that responsibility is to do our job correctly and not cause the city monies or other issues. And by just doing this, I believe that we will lose, we will lose both time and we will lose the request to change the way we select mayor. All I'm saying simply is that we should, number one, we should go to executive session and have, and discuss this and make a final decision with this group. If we're not, and you want to put it on the ballot, that's fine. But I'm going to vote against it, not because I'm voting against the will of the people. I've always believed in that. And I think it's really shameful if we try to accuse each of us of not wanting to do what the people want us to do. And in the sense of wanting to do what the people wanted us to do is I'm saying that we should follow procedure. And if we don't follow procedure, it's going to just create problems for us. And I believe this procedure is problematic. That's it.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot, did you want to go back to the original motion?
I'm fine with the original motion. Yeah, absolutely. You know, it's interesting, you know, I read the consent decree. You know, you show me where it is clearly spelled out in there in all four systems, other than a small little footnote. It's footnote five on page eight that references all the systems. So just for the people to know, it clearly was not a major issue. Now, now some of us want to give people the right to vote, to expand, empower people more, and it becomes problematic. It's a small little footnote. That tells me that it was not a significant concern. Now, all of a sudden, it is. You know, and again, moving forward in other parts, there'll be continuous changes as outlined in this in 2023 regarding proportional, the districts, and some, the minority, majority of districts have to remain. So the notion that this is problem, this is just going to continue, and the city has little say in this whole thing. So it wasn't significant then. I'm curious, it's just a footnote, why is it significant now?
Okay. Madam, did you have a comment?
Now, just a quick comment, and that is, if there's nothing to prevent the council from taking this up in executive session and having a vote in public session tomorrow as well. But in other words, it could be discussed, and the council could come out of executive... come out of executive session on the Zoom and take a vote.
Okay, Counsel Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, I came into this meeting, you know, intending to vote yes on this motion as long as it was in a non-binding fashion. I just want to say, based on the information we received tonight, the city solicitor, that even a, a non-binding referendum could be legally problematic. I can't vote for it. I think the right thing to do would be to, you know, refer the matter to executive session. You know, the maker, at least one maker of the motion, I know wants a roll call. I'm not going to make the motion to refer it, but that, it seems that there's a, you know, a good amount of support for bringing this motion to executive council tomorrow. And I, I hope there's support to do that. Thank you.
Roll call, move the question.
All right, roll call. Counsel Sumerus.
No.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
No.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Lady.
Yes.
Counsel Mercy.
Yes.
Counsel New.
No.
Counsel Rock.
Yes.
Six years. Six years, motion passes. Our last motion tonight by Counsel Elliot, myself, request council vote to support letter to the governor and provide school committee, provide the school committee vote to move teachers up in the vaccination process following vaccinations of frontline providers and senior citizens. Counsel Elliot. You're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion speaks for itself. I think it's important that, that teachers are vaccinated. I watched the school committee meeting and they were looking for support from, from the council to send to the governor. I think it makes all the sense in the world, given the fact that we want to get our children back into school and, and they, they should be made a priority in the next phase. And I'm not sure, I, I think the phases do change in the levels. So given that sort of variable, I, I think it's important that we weigh in. You know, we have, we have a lot of school teachers in the city and we want to get them back in and if this is some of the concerns that the teachers have, then I say that we, that we support them.
Thank you. Madam Manager.
I just had a question for clarification. I don't know what that means is regarding, for senior citizens. So right now, we're doing 75 and above.
Right. But I just wanted to ensure, Madam Manager, that, you know, they're in phase two, they're, they are the more vulnerable population. And I do understand that 65 and has not been included in phase two, so.
Right. So they're, they're maybe behind 65 right now, but, so I'm just trying, just for clarification for the letter. They actually got moved back, I think, at one point, because I think they had been before 65, perhaps, I'm not sure. But, so it's, as, as I understand it, counsel, so right now, we're doing 75 and above. The next phase is 65 to 74, plus people with two comorbidities.
Were they not, were they moved out of phase two now?
They're in phase two, but they're behind the next step, which is 65 to 74 in people with two comorbidities.
I want to make sure our seniors naturally should be protected and that's why I kind of include that, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Rock?
Yeah, I, I agree with the manager and Counsel Elliot. I would hope that 65-year-old, you know, seniors and those with more than one comorbidity are, stay exactly where they are, especially where, you know, there's, there's no evidence of any transmission through the school system. You know, I want the teachers to get vaccinated as soon as they can, get the kids back into school. But, you know, I, every, every council is getting calls from 66, 70, 71-year-old residents that are just begging to get vaccinated, you know, because they're going through a cancer treatments or underlying conditions. So I, I appreciate Counsel Elliot making that certification with the manager. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any announcements? The motion to adjourn by Counselor Rock, seconded by Counsel Elliot. Thank you.